We're ready. Welcome to the February 7, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. At this point in time, the commissioners now utilize the speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form and locate on the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the commission manager, Holly, located at the lower right side of the dais. Right now, we will do a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Drews.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Next on our agenda is a review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Roskneck, seconded by Lassiter. Is there any changes or additions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Ms. Holly Hinnis.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 17, 2023. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting on January 25, 2023. Number seven is to amend the minutes from the January 3, 2023, regular meeting to correct the two typographical errors for the headings of the items from the compensation committee to accurately reflect the following. Number A was a recommendation for 4.1 vacation benefits policy, and B was a recommendation for 4.3, the sick leave policy. Number eight is to approve the proposed resolution of the Green Valley Sanitary District for annexation. Number nine is to approve the reclassification request to authorize back pay and to place Alex Taylor Kenzie at B-22, Step 1, $19.41 an hour. Caleb Lansdowne at B-24, Step 1, $24.07 an hour. And Mallory Minor at B-24, Step 1, $24.07 an hour, all effective January 8. Number 10 is to reappoint Mr. Jerry Herschoff to the Whedon Pest Board for a term of three years, effective February 7, 2023. Number 11 is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Baseball Parents, Inc., doing business as Post 22 Baseball. Number 12 is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for Rushmore Hockey Association. And finally, number 13 is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Ford River Shriners Crescent Lodge, number 210.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any member of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Any from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion to approve items five through 13.
Moved by Mr. Drews, seconded by Roskneck to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us to regular agenda items, and I'll recognize them as our auditor Cindy Muller, item number 14, renewal of retail on-sale liquor with Sunday sales with Horse Creek Resort.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County auditor. And yes, we're asking for approval of the renewal of the retail on-sale liquor with Sunday sales for Horse Creek Resort.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Hickock, seconded by Roskneck to approve the retail liquor license for Sunday sales at Horse Creek Resort as presented and released license upon payment of appropriate taxes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is an item from emergency management. You don't look like Dustin.
Alex Sowhite, Deputy Director for Pennington County Emergency Management. We are here to bring forth a position that we have had as a staff assistant three position, and with Val in our office, who was both EM and fire, she moved over to fire 100%. So now, we need a staff assistant one position in our office, and so that's what we are bringing forth to today to have approved so that we can post that position.
Chairman.
Thanks, Alexa. Ms. Hickock.
So wasn't the city paying half of Val's, and then you guys were paying half? Is that what's happening again?
The city wasn't paying any of Val's. We were splitting, so this position is 100% for emergency management, which will be at half. Is that what you mean? So not that when she was with fire, but yes.
So you're splitting, but the city never paid any for... Okay.
Well, the city did pay the EM portion when we had, when we were splitting it. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
And now, the city's not going to pay any of it?
No, they're going to pay half. They just turned me off when you said Val's name.
It's okay, because you didn't have that in here. That's the only thing I didn't see. So just checking.
Which that funds will still come into support emergency management as it does, you know, a portion of our budget.
Okay, so the city's paying half, and we're paying half of the...
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for someone to read them. Can you read the motion, please?
Move to approve creation of emergency management staff assistant one position at DBM of A-13, base rate of 1527 an hour to update the position listing on file. I move approval.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Hickock, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Alexa.
Thanks, Alexa.
Director of Equalization. Next, we come to items number 16. I don't see Shannon out in our audience. I probably, and I don't see Jerome out there either, so we can't.
Do we need them to approve it, Chair?
Abatement?
Right. Holly, no.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve the abatement application for tax year 2022 for Joel Carlin, parcel 8002126, for the $89.34 for that amount.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
This is based on an error that was made apparently in the equalization office, so I don't see any concern in approving this.
I would agree. We're going to see many more of these coming forward before the Board of Equalization. So we do have a motion. I need a second.
Gary was a second.
You were the second?
Mr. Chair.
Mr....
I might have made that motion too soon. Maybe we should have asked somebody from the public if they had any comment on that.
Yeah. Any comment from the public?
There's Shannon.
Here comes Shannon. You have any comments, Shannon? You're okay with the motion? The motion was to approve the abatement application for tax year 2022 for George Carlin, parcel 8002126 for $89.34.
Good, thank you. Sorry I was late.
Did you want to make a little comment about how more of these are coming forward before Board of Equalization?
About what?
More of these abatements coming forward.
I think we're getting to the end of them. There'll still be a few stragglers as they work their way through the cities, but I think we're getting to the end of the large group of them.
Okay.
That's why we only have one today.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Any comment from the public? Any further from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item... We want to table this? I'd look for a motion to table item 17, items from fire administration until they're available.
Mr. Chair, I think that was just for information. I don't know.
No, they just wanted to play part of the video.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Obviously, you're running too fast for everybody today.
Do you want to motion to table?
Well... Joe's got a long list of stuff. I hate to get him started and then... Why don't, yes, why don't you start the video? That's a good idea. So we're going to start the video from the 605, Episode 8, Volunteer Firefighters. This was done over... Deb, do you have any background on this that you could explain?
This is just about the fire department recruitment and how much it means for the volunteers for these different departments in order to move forward.
Volunteer fire departments respond to the needs of their general area, wherever that might be, whether it's farmland or range land or even suburban homes tucked away in the pines. The Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department serves an area just outside of Rapid City. Jeremy Walla is the fire chief there.
This fire district used to be much, much larger, and over the years, it's kind of shrunk down, and other districts have formed and changed. At one point in the early days, we had seven stations with this fire district. We're now down to the one station. We basically cover from Catron Boulevard to 385 and a little bit each way of Sheridan Lake Road. So we have 21 members of the department. We are now, since February of 2022, two full-time paid staff and the other 19 volunteers. We're always looking for more volunteers to join. There is no limit on how many we can have. The bigger side of that is trying to find people who have the time and have the desire to volunteer and take the training. So we do many things here. We do structured fire. We do wildland fire. We also do some light rescue, and then we also do many other things in the county. So one of those being, we provide the cascade system for structured fires in other districts, and that is breathing air for our air packs. So we show up on scene. We're able to fill those air packs as we go interior, use the air up, and then come back out. We have to get a new bottle, similar to diving, but it's not really the same setup, but same concept. You're operating on captured volume of air. So that's one of the services we provide in the county through our mutual aid agreements.
I'm glad you brought that out. Explain how that concept of mutual aid or that policy of mutual aid works for you here at Whispering Pines.
So the way that works, and it does in any district, is you can sign the memorandum of understanding with all the other districts, and basically what that says is when we're dispatched for a certain call type. So if we pick a structured fire, whether it's in our district or outside of our district, according to that MOU, is we're signing on to go and help those other departments, and they're signing on to come and help us. So again, you know, NFPA standards, you should have 17 people on a structured fire, a couple of different apparatus, and you can't always provide that as a single station with volunteers, because we never really know how many people are going to show up for every call type, and it depends on the time of day. If everybody's at work, we may not see, you know, the 17 people show up. So through that memorandum of understanding and that mutual aid agreement, when we get alarmed, the other stations will get alarmed as well, and we set up run cards with dispatch. So when that alarm happens, we kind of just go out in concentric circles based on the size of the incident, and those departments within that radius come and bring vehicles, people, you know, and the expertise to come put out the fire. So we do a lot of that in this county and in the state.
Fighting fires in the Whispering Pines area is a bit different than the situation in scenic. Here, you're mainly dealing with medical calls, rescue, and structured fires, and the training that's needed to save lives and property costs time and money.
We are asking a lot. We're asking, like you said, hundreds of hours to become certified as a firefighter, to become certified as a wildland firefighter, to become certified as an EMT. The other piece to this that people don't really realize is there's a lot of travel involved. There's a lot of trainings that we can't or don't get here. So if, you know, you've reached the level where you need the next piece to bring more information or better knowledge of the job, you have to go somewhere else to do it, and a lot of times, departments can't pay for that.
So it's time now for some tough questions. What does the future look like for volunteer fire departments? Are they a sustainable way to keep people and property safe?
That is a really big question, and the answer is yes and no. The yes part of it is, in those really rural areas, there just is not a tax base. You know, you may get, even within Pennington County, you may get to a point where you have six or eight homeowners or landowners, and that's the entire district.
Yeah.
And they're paying to buy the fire trucks. They are the volunteers. A lot of them have their own quote-unquote "fire engine" sitting in their barn. They don't have a station, because that's all they've got. And they're still out there getting the training, doing the training. This day and age, what does help is we can do virtual training, so we can use Microsoft Teams, we can use Zoom, we can use, you know, those online aspects and provide training classes to those departments, so they aren't traveling, you know, 100 miles, 200 miles to go to a training and then pay for the training and then travel back home. They can now do it from their home. They can do it from their station. We really try to leverage those kinds of things, too, when we can. On the no side of it is the busier we get and the more economic strain that is placed on individuals and families, that just means more work hours, more people in the household working, which means less time to volunteer, to do those things that you want to do or you think that you should do, if you feel an obligation to help your fellow neighbors, but you don't have time, because it does take time, and that's a big investment for people.
They give up time with their families. They train for worst-case scenarios, often at their own cost, all to put their own lives on the line for the sake of their neighbors. I don't know about you, but I'm glad there are people like this in West 605.
Very nice. Next, I'll recognize Mr. Jerome Harvey.
Thank you, Jan. Commissioners, Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator, Pennington County, South Dakota. Just talk briefly about what you guys got the chance to see and some of the things that we're doing. First of all, I'd like to recognize our Commissioner Deb Hickock. She's constantly challenging us and in the fire service board. We'll recognize our chairman, Caleb Dustman, always challenging us to do, you know, what are you guys doing as far as recruitment and retention? What are you guys doing with that? And we're always trying to do something. We've got something going on, but I'd like to recognize you, Lloyd, for something that you said back in December, and we were meeting with you in December, and he said, he specifically brought that out, says, "What are you doing as far as recruitment?" And thought a lot about that, and kind of put us back to me to thinking about what are we actually doing, where we're at with the program as far as trying to recruit people into the service. And been back and forth on this, and we were approached by KNBN, New Center One, approached us here a little over a month ago now, and asked us if we were interested in doing this West 605 program. Sure, absolutely. There's absolutely no way we could afford to buy this type of program. And it ended up being, there's 23 minutes of the program. I've sent you the link. You can watch it after your leisure, and there's, it does, I feel it does, the first guy that's on there that they talked to, I don't know what his problem is. Anyway. There are three segments that are on there, and I think it does a nice job of balancing between what's going on in the county, between the agricultural issues that we have going on, the stress and strain that our producers are under, and of course, in our suburban environments and those areas. So I think it does a nice job of that. So we use this as a place to kick off and kind of revamp our recruitment and retention program, our recruitment program. So we went in and completely redid our website. I can't do that without the help that you guys have allowed us by bringing Val on full time into the county fire. We found out about the debut date a little less than a week when they were going to debut the program. So we rebuilt the website, pushed everything to the front page of the website. People can access that through a QR code. Extensive videos today.
That's nice.
And then we did a flyer, and the problem with recruitment and recruitment of people is where do they want to come into and what do they want to do for people in the county and the city, et cetera? So we've set it up so they can access or request information on being either a firefighter, career volunteer, EMS, ambulance, career volunteer, search and rescue, or dispatch. And these are all things that tie back into supporting of our fire service and our volunteer and retention services. So the website, either through the Facebook, through Twitter, through the QR code, you access that. It's very simple. We ask for your name, or where you're located at, and what are you looking to get into? And it's just a simple box that goes on the automated system. We see that, and then we're able to either push that person out to our various departments that they're looking for or send them the information that we need. And we've had several requests on that. Some of our departments have received individual requests, and that's where we've revamped that, and that's on our front page of our webpage. Some of the issues that have come out with that is, over a year ago, the state of South Dakota and Crispy Gnome Governor advised us she was going to put some money into recruitment and retention, along with some other funding into the fire service to help out with some training and stuff. That never happened, and I think that's a really sad commentary, when we can't get our people in here to understand the... Again, I feel that we're past the tipping point as far as recruitment and keeping our volunteers in the service. I think we have a real issue that across the state. So we are not turning down anybody who is showing an interest in coming into the service. Right now, on the front page, you would see a kind of a recruitment thing that the State Department of Public Safety has out. There's some QR codes there. They have some job openings, and that's all here in Pennington County, in the western part of the state. So we're trying to help across the board as far as emergency services, as far as recruitment, and using this program that you saw about a six-and-a-half-minute segment of, and I appreciate your time on that, of a 23-minute program that really, I think, outlines kind of the crisis that we're seeing in the volunteer services.
Thank you, Jerome. Ms. Hickock.
Thank you. Jerome, I watched the video, and it was really good. It got to the point we needed to get to on recruitment. You did really well in the interview as well, Jeremy. I enjoyed just watching the progress that you guys have made through the volunteer fire departments, just wanting to put out the video, let alone the different things that we have done to move forward on the recruitment. I also like to thank the county. We have shown that we are dedicated to our volunteer fire departments through making, as they said, they were having problems making buildings and putting things, their equipment in barns and things like that. So the three different areas that we moved forward, plus we added Silver City, was a huge difference. So this county commission can thank volunteer fire departments and have thanked them moving forward to saving lives and EMTs or just first responders, and how much we appreciate them in Pennington County. So that is this board, us five commissioners. It wasn't Deb Hickock. It was this five commissioners that moved that forward and showed the importance. Now, they are going to give back by doing what we say and what you commissioners have said to move forward in the future. So thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, Ron, and Gary, and Travis, because your dedication to these guys have made a huge difference. It wasn't me, it was us. So thank you for what you've done for Western South Dakota and Pennington County.
Thanks, Deb. Is there any further comments?
Mr. Chair. Relative to...
Tom Roskneck.
Our support for the four fire departments that we allocated 500,000, a piece to design and build more up-to-date fire stations or substations that would be effective and efficient. And yesterday, all the commissioners got a letter from the Silver City Fire Department, and I'll just read that real quick. It says, "Dear Commissioners, just wanted to say thank you for all that you have done for the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department. We could not have done this without your help and support. The new merit station of Silver City Volunteer Fire Department will benefit not only the residents and visitors of our county and fire district, but will also be a benefit to the residents and visitors for our neighboring fire district and county. We will keep the commission informed as to our progress, and we'll be sure to invite you out for major milestones during our construction. Again, thank you for your support." And two or three years ago, this was just a dream. Nobody ever thought that would happen. I just can't believe in two years. They secured land that they didn't have, and working with the Forest Service and working with the commission and working with Jerome's office has all made possible, and now it's reality.
Thank you, Ron. Jerome, my comment's going to be is thank you and your team for the work that you do, because quite frankly, when you first come on board, you identified the problem that we had, that we... That's why we keep asking that question, is about recruitment and retention, because that was something, you seen it when you very come on board, that needed to be worked. And sometimes, it beats us down, but you kept with it.
Right.
And I also would like to thank KNBN, I think that's who did this.
KNBN, yeah.
I mean, absolutely, this is a fantastic way to recruit, and not only that, but also to promote what you guys are doing, and so I really thank them and you guys working together with them on that, and that's great.
Thank you.
Do you have any further comments?
Just to, first of all, again, it doesn't happen without the support of the commission. We see the rest of Western South Dakota struggle with this, and you guys as commissioners, going back to the starting of the office and pulling all this together, the legacy investments and stuff, it doesn't happen without the involvement of the commission. I can't stress that enough to you. If the commission is not involved, the rest of this, it just disintegrates, and we see that on a daily basis. To Commissioner Ross Knecht's comments, the national championship, Division One, South Dakota State University football team beating North Dakota State, and... Finally, anyway, in the national championship. In the comment, if you talked to Coach Stiegelmeier, he has a couple of different pieces that he talks about. What did it do to build a national championship? Couple of things is, of course, act as your national championship every day. There's no national championship for firefighters. Our people, as Commissioner, look, Deb always reminds us all the time about the fact that we are, every day, every hour, every minute of the day, one of our volunteer firefighters is fighting for somebody's life here in Pennington County. That's a national championship right there. The other comment that he made that sticks with me, and is the number one comment that he made, it comes down to facilities, facilities, facilities. If we don't have the facilities for people to gather, to keep their equipment in, to have a rallying point, you don't have anything. In this program, you guys have been working on with this. I was still working to wrap up the WASTA issue. We're still working on the communications issue up north, but if we don't have facilities, we won't have nothing. And that investment that you guys are putting back into is paying off, and the fact that you guys do, Lloyd, you do continue to challenge us on things like that, because you made that comment in December. Again, Commissioner Hickock always asks us in the meetings and stuff about it, but you brought that comment out. I just, okay, where are we at with the program? What are we doing as far as recruitment and retention? And then we had this opportunity, and we took advantage of it.
Thank you, Jerome, and please pass on our respect and appreciation to your organization.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Val.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Dustin.
Next, we come up to item 18, items from the highway department. I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Item A up in front of you is authorization to advertise and let our annual construction projects. So this is something we do on an annual basis, our crack seal, our chip seals, and then as of a couple of years ago, we started our milling and reclaiming. And then one other item that we will have on this one is fencing for South Rutherford Road. Current preliminary estimates for asphalt crack seal are, we're doing about 42 miles at a cost of about $150,000 to $160,000. Chip seal or asphalt surface treatment, we're going to do 29 miles. We received a letter earlier, I believe, late 2022, that asphalt prices are going to see an increase of about 20... an increase of about 25%. They they're projecting for 2022. So we're trying to take that into account. We're estimating that 29 to 30 miles to be at a cost of 1 million to 1.2 million with that 25% increase. So hopefully we've budgeted enough there. We'll have to reassess, I guess, once bids come in. Milling and reclaiming, so this is a precursor to our base stabilization for Sage Creek Road and in future chip seal on that road. That cost we're doing 17 miles, 16 and a half miles at a cost of about 600,000 dollars all in. And then fencing on South Rochford Road. So this is some fencing on South Rochford Road was something we were trying to get done last year under our annual fencing contract, late last fall, the fencing contract that was doing it, they they got about a mile done, informed us that they would not be able to to finish this. So we went on the hunt for another fencing contractor to try and finish this before the project. So we're going to put the fence, the permanent fence in talks with the Forest Service outside the grading limits so that the project won't harm the the fence and we can get it done and get the cattle off the road. So the contractor and the public don't have to deal with it. Preliminary estimates probably between 200 and 300,000 dollars for that fencing. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Sorry, any questions for Joe Miller?
Airman.
Ms. Hancock.
Motion to request authorize the highway department to advertise and let 2023 annual construction projects.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lester. Any public comment? Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we come to item B, Joe.
So item B is authorization authorization to advertise and let our 2023 annual supplies and materials. So these materials are such as our our asphalt concrete composite or asphalt concrete that we use for doing our deep patches. When our roads are failing, we dig down and replace the sub base. Some of the gravel that we purchase from like Pete Leans or Kroll's, our concrete pipe, our I haven't seen, I guess that comes to mind, True North Steel Culvert usually comes out of Beetle County. I don't know that we've seen that this year. That should be coming forward. So those are just some of the type types of things that we purchase and we generally purchase over the 25,000 dollar bid allowance under the state bid laws. So that's why we're here today.
Thanks, Joe. Is there any questions for Joe? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'd look for any comments from the commission. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the highway department to advertise and let the 2023 annual supplies and materials.
Take it.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number C, Joe.
Item C is our bridge inspection resolution. This is something that's also done annually. The state puts out a list of bridge engineers that we can choose from to do our bridge inspections. So the bridge inspections are federally mandated to be inspected every two years. Some of them, we do on a 12 month cycle, just dependent on their condition. Some deteriorate faster than the others once they get to a certain point. So some of those have been put on a 12 month cycle. So we try and do generally a little bit over half of them each year. That way we don't have to do all of them every two years. So typically we spend about 20 grand on on bridge inspections. 2022's final number was 21,000 dollars, 2020, excuse me, 2022 was 21,000, 21 was about 198, and then 20 was 22.7. So generally, we we spend about 20 grand. KLJ has been doing a very good job for us, both with the the bridge designs that we're doing on a big program, helping us along, getting a program put together for that. As we all know, that takes a lot more time than what we originally thought. So they've been very good with us, working with us, getting those team designed and and have helped us get many millions of dollars in grants. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Ms. Hancock.
Approximately, how many culverts and bridges are they doing inspections on this year?
So bridges, I believe it's, like I said, it's a little over half. So we have 127 bridges, so we do half and half, but some of those are on a 12 month cycle. So I believe that I knew somebody was going to ask me that question as soon as I started talking about it and I forgot to get that number, but I believe the number is probably between 60 and 65.
And how about culverts?
Uh, they don't generally do any inspection on culverts, but the county's got about 3,800 culverts throughout Pennington County.
I just didn't know if the reinforced concrete box culverts were in that, but.
If they, you know, if they span over 20 feet, they're considered a bridge. Yep. So when we when we try and replace bridges with culverts, we try and not make them a bridge, but sometimes the the hydraulics don't allow that to happen. So if it's over 20 foot long, yes, it will be a bridge.
So then they will inspect those.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Miller? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the Bridge Reinspection Program Resolution 2023 dash 02 dash 07 dash 1, requesting the South Dakota DOT to hire a KLJ engineering to perform Pennington County's 2023 bridge inspections.
Take it.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number D.
So item number D is something we did on Rochford Road ourselves, core drilling, and it was very cumbersome at best. The state actually has a rig that is a dedicated pickup that they have a drilling rig that does these cores much quicker. They don't have to mobilize, they don't have to set stuff down on the the road, pick it up. It's all just one mobile unit. So we reached out to them and asked them if they would be able to do the core drilling on our road. And they did say that they would be able to fit that into their schedule and it is something that they do. So the information that we're going to gather from this core drilling is to see how much gravel we have on Sage Creek Road so that we have adequate material for the base stabilization. We did purchase some of the millings that was approved here at a previous meeting. So we'd planned to put those on Sage Creek. We just want to make sure we we've got enough material along the 17 miles of Sage Creek Road that we're going to do base stabilization on so that we we get an adequate base stabilization before we we chip seal it, so.
Thanks, Joe. Is there any questions for Joe? Ms. Hancock.
So Joe, what's the ADT on this road?
So during the summer months, I believe the last time I checked, it's around 400 ADT.
That's what I thought. And then the base stabilization is 17 miles. Do we have any gravel left going all the way to Bear Creek?
Uh, so this, the base stabilization goes from the end of the asphalt all the way to Bear Creek. So the only portion of gravel that will be left will be from Bear Creek to Highway 44, and I believe that's about four and a half, five miles.
And then that'll still be the same scenic. We'll be doing that four and a half miles or are we going to take that over?
So they the scenic is actually doing a lot more than that. They they're actually going up to the the park. I think they're doing about 11 miles currently.
Okay.
So all they'll have left is about four and a half or five because the rest of it'll be hard surfaced.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Joe and Sean for going out and meeting with the Travis and me and some other people. A lot of the ag producers were very concerned about this road, about the base stabilization. They were very professional, Sean and Joe, and they had a nice talk about having scenic take over some of these and it worked out really well for that team effort from Pennington County and the scenic. And I thought that was just one of the better meetings I've been at where we had that solution finding for both sides. And now we're moving forward on that 17 miles where they're going to do less for scenic and that base stabilization because of that ADT, it's a well-traveled road. That's huge for those ag producers, let alone the tourism industry. So thank you, Joe, and and your team, not just Sean, and it's your whole team that makes that difference for that. So thank you for moving forward with this. We've had a lot of calls on it, so appreciate it.
Yep, I think it'll be a good thing for the the whole community as a whole because Sage Creek is one of the the main north-south connectors between 44 and the interstate. To get north-south from the from Highway 44, the next closest is 160th that goes through New Underwood. So you can you can imagine, you know, during that spring or I say spring, we're we're used to getting blizzards in the spring, but the the December blizzard there right before Christmas, there was a truck stuck right there at the top of the park and we had to shut this road down for a couple of days and and so people had to to take that long detour. So it's very crucial to not only the surrounding areas, but to the the park and the tourist industry.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
Just to follow up, if I could, if you would, Joe, people that we met with in the scenic district, will you give them an update on what we're doing with and when that's happening and
Yep, I've actually
geological investigation?
We actually worked with Matt Bowlen out of scenic, I believe he, I don't know if he's the chair now or or what, but we did meet with, I actually met Dan and Matt out on site when we had to close that road and kind of talked through and we worked together on on getting that road closed. So I will reach out to them when we start this project.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, Mr. Lester.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the contract for geotechnical investigation with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Sage Creek Road.
It's been moved by Mr. Lester, seconded by Ms. Hancock. Any further discussion, any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number E.
Item E, this is a state infrastructure bank loan application for South Rochford Road. So I don't know if Travis was on here when we reallocated those funds. My memory eludes me, but I think it was two years ago, we reallocated the the funds from South Rochford Road, the the federal grant money that we obtained for that. We we reallocated that to Sheridan Lake Road. And as part of that whole thing, we we requested to transfer the loan from Sheridan Lake Road to to South Rochford Road. Well, what ended up happening, just to kind of keep the paperwork and everything done is they actually just canceled the SIB loan since South since Sheridan Lake Road is already under construction and then we're we're, that's why we're now applying for the SIB loan for South Rochford. So with that being said, we are still on track. I've seen an email go out from the the engineering firm that's designing it. They addressed all the comments for the that the bid letting office had. So they sent those the plan sets back over to the bid letting office at the state today so that they have to be uploaded to the federal highways for their review by February 8th. So we're we're ahead of schedule on that to meet the March 22 deadline for bid letting. With the SIB loan and what we have in the South Dakota or the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, they keep changing those acronyms. I don't can't keep track. So what we have left in that account, plus the SIB loan, should be adequate enough funding to fund the entire project. So we'll see what bids come in and and go from there, so.
Thanks, Joe. Ms. Hancock.
So if if the bids come up higher, are they going to let the loan be more than the 12 million?
That's a conversation we'll have to have with probably, I believe Joel Junt is the one that approves this. I don't know if it even goes to the Transportation Commission, but that's just a conversation we'll have to have.
You have to.
With that, typically, my recollection on Sheridan Lake Road, 10 years is the longest they'd like to go. But I mean, for a project of this nature that's been going on this long, I'm sure they they would probably entertain going longer and loaning us more money on on basically because that's essentially what we're doing. We get about a million dollars from the the federal government that's to the state and then the state gives it to us. Every year we get that allocation. We've just been banking it in that STPGP account for the last 10, 10 years or so. So we've got, we summed it up on Sheridan before we switched the funding. So we still have some in there. So the answer to the question, I don't know without asking, so.
And what's the ADT on that road?
On South Rochford is about 150 to 180.
Okay. I just think this has been going on a long time and we need to move forward on it. I appreciate all the work you've done and redone and redone. Take my word for it, since I've been here, between the loans, between the GI or the fens and the different stuff for the, what do you call it?
Oh, the fens?
Fens. That's been redone two or three at least that I know of, just just a lot of work. I know Mr. Guffey has done some timber work on that area, fencing and different stuff. We spent a lot of cash flow in this area for that ADT. So at this point, I think we just need to follow through and get it done. But thank you for all your work because it does take a lot of time. People don't understand to get this done, it's not just one piece and it's finished. Every two years you have to do those fens and those different things if you do not keep them up or get the project done. So a lot of redos on this project and I think it's time just to move forward and hopefully you can get it done, Joe.
Thank you. Is there any further questions for Joe? Are any further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the state infrastructure bank loan application for South Rochford Road reconstruction in the amount of 11,000, excuse me, 11,962 dollars.
We have a motion Ross Connect, seconded by Mr. Drews for approval. Any public comment? Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we come to item number 19 from items from the Compensation Committee. I'll recognize HR Director Carol Bancroft.
Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And in the last meeting, the Compensation Committee brought forth the request for the Commissioners to approve that we would work on the wage study in a two-step process that this year we would work towards just stabilizing the process by staying the same course going into the wages for and compensation for 2024 as we did in 2023. And then at the same time, we would begin treating the wage study as a complete project where the committee would work through all the different phases and timelines, including making sure we have good, solid communications with all the key stakeholders and that that would be prepared then that we would be able to launch that for 2025. But we would have the wage study project completed by the first quarter in 2024 so that that way we can communicate effectively to the employees as far as what that would be. So the request is for a motion to approve the wage study recommendations as presented by the Compensation Committee as a short-term project for 2024 budget planning and a long-term project for 2025 budget planning.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any questions for Carol?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
So, sorry, I'm talking a lot. A lot of these are my districts, so are meetings. So on this wage study, are we looking at a amount that we need to look forward to or are we bringing that forward later? I think, Ms. Carol, so for approving something, we still need to come forward with that amount worth thinking, if I'm correct?
Correct, that I'm working with our auditor, that getting the information that we will need in order to understand what we would be able to do for 2024 so that we have that and ready for the the budget planning for 2024. And then a part of the project for wage study that is the overall comprehensive plan for 2025 that, again, we would be coming to the commission to let you know as far as what it is and the financial impact.
I appreciate that, Carol. Just so they know they're not approving an amount or anything, we're just looking in the Compensation Committee at different ways of how we can make sure our employees are treated well, as you know, from a lot of the changes from sick leave and vacation pay and stuff. And now this is the next step. So we got a hardworking group. Holly's helped us, helped Ms. Carol. We have a great team with Pepper again and Sandy. And then there's a lot of discussion from department heads that aren't on the Compensation Committee that are always in there willing to give their input, which has been huge for us. So appreciate this committee.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the wage study recommendation as presented by the Compensation Committee as a short-term project for 2024 budget planning and long-term project for 2025 budget planning.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hancock. Any discussion from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to public comment and I'm going to, items from the public, and I'm going to just read the the quotes underneath that just for the people that are on YouTube so they know what public is. Items from public is a speaker request form is required. It's at the back of the chambers. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this item on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minute Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. I just wanted to make that public for those that are tuning into YouTube, so they understand that.
So Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Talk again. So speakers under this will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. We added that, and I think that was good. Thank you, Ms. Holly and Joan, that had worked on this to move that forward. I'm glad you read that, so, um, people understand that now we are making sure that they are noticed and their interest is noticed. So that's a big plus for us. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we are ahead of schedule. So what I'd like to do, if the board's okay, is we've got, I think, four executive items, executive session items. So I would, if the board's okay with that, I would look for a motion, if you look at the back of your agenda, to go.
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
Under.
Find that?
Yeah, I'm looking for the.
SDCL 1-25-2.
S, SDCL 1-25-2, in parentheses, 1, for personnel matters, and SDCL 1-25-2, in parentheses, 3, for contractual pending litigation matters.
Okay, that was moved by Hancock, seconded by Lassiter.
Yes, sir.
All in favor going into, any comment from public? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We go into executive session. Need to go back into session.
Mr. Chair, so move.
Moved by Ron Roskneck. Seconded by Mr. Drews. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
I'll recognize Mr. Drews.
Are you ready for a motion for going to, as a Board of Adjustment?
Uh, I think we're gonna, we're gonna do the two executive items.
Oh, okay.
First. So with that, I'll recognize Mr. Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair. I move to, or I place, uh, move to place Jacob Enzinger at DBMB 23, Step 3, $22.02 an hour effective January 8th, 2023, and authorize back pay.
Is there gonna be a date for the back pay? No date. Will we have a motion?
Second.
And seconded by Drews. Any discussion from the public? Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You have a third motion? A second one?
Nope, did not have one.
Okay, I'll, I'll do, uh, this one, then Travis can do the last. Move to authorize the Chair's signature on the restricted area agreement with No Bad Days Campground LLC.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion from the audience? Any from the board? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll recognize Commissioner Travis Lester.
Move to approve the creation of the Fire Administrative Coordinator position at DBM of C41 to update the position listing on file, and to further move to place Valerie Newman into the position at Step 1, $2,332 bi-weekly from the General Fund effective January 8th, 2023, and to authorize back pay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Uh, for those who, when we left, we didn't have quite the audience that we do right now. So what we did is we finished a little bit early with some of our regular agenda items, and so we went into executive session to deal with some stuff, and that's what we just came out and dealt with. So that's where we're at with them in the meeting. So right now, we're ready to go into Board of Adjustments. I'd look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Chair, move the, go onto Board of Adjustment.
Moved by Ron Roskneck, seconded by Drews to go into Board of Adjustments. Any discussion from public or board? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll recognize Jason.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thunis is Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item A is variance 23-01. To reduce a rear yard setback from 25 feet to 21 feet to construct a detached garage on the subject property. The applicants are Barry and Judy Bauer. They're in the audience if you have questions for them. Location of the property is 12712 Old Hill City Road. It is 1.16 acres, currently zoned rural residential district, and access is off Old Hill City Road. When basing their recommendation, staff takes a two-pronged approach. Whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest is the first prong. Starting with number one, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff found no. The requested setback is 21 feet from the north property line. The proposed detached garage will be constructed 21.1 feet from the property line, and I do have a survey here. Um, it is stamped by a surveyor, correctly annotating the 21.1 foot setback. Uh, number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Staff found no. It appears that all existing structures in the neighborhood meet the 25-foot setback. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found no. Rural residential zoning districts require a 25-foot setback from all property lines. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found no. Future land use of the property is rural residential, which also requires a 25-foot setback from all property lines. And lastly, number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare? Staff found no. The proposed garage will be at the end of the applicant's driveway. The requested seat, requested setback of 21 feet should have minimal impact on safety, health, or general welfare of the public. Of note, the nearest residence to the north of the property is 24003 Peak Cabin Road, and it will be approximately 200 feet from the proposed garage. And prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Number one, does that special condition exist? Staff found no. Topography does limit the buildable area on portions of the property, but not to the extent that this is the only location to construct the proposed garage. Some property history. Uh, there are three building permits on the property, one for a single-family residence, two for, uh, two different sheds. And there is an onsite wastewater treatment system. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has requested to allow 21-foot setback to the north property line in order to construct a detached garage. The applicant stated that the request is due to topographical constraints on the property. On January 23rd, staff conducted a site visit and observed that buildable areas of the property are limited due to topography. The, and I do have pictures of that here. So this is looking to the north from the driveway towards the residence. Uh, this is looking back towards the southeast. This is looking to the east. This is the area of the proposed garage here where the shed is. A little more clarification. He did have corner pins marked out there, so I was able to identify where it was from the other side. Uh, you can see the property pin here. Uh, that's 21.1 feet at the closest corner. Other angle looking to the north. This is the rear yard. And this is from the front yard looking back towards the residence, and the proposed garage would be back here again. Staff has not received any public concerns or objections for the request. Uh, the staff does recommend denial of variance 23-01, as there are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Thank you, Jason. I don't have any speaker request forms on this item. Is, throughout this next process, if, I see we have a lot of audience members. If you have something you want to speak on, please fill out a speaker request form and turn it into Holly for this item. Unless you are the applicant or the applicant's agent, then I will call you up. But, so I have no speaker request forms, excuse me, on this item, but I'll.
Chairman.
I was waiting for you to finish, but I was gonna, I was gonna ask a question to staff.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to make that, make the audience aware. Uh, Travis.
Jason, so I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm reading through here. And so my, my major question is, ob- obviously, they're, they're trying to put it 21 feet, um, so inside that 25-foot setback. But what's the major reason for that? As I read through here, I noticed that they had concerns with disturbance of the rock shelf negatively affecting the adjacent home foundation. I'd, I'd like to get some more information on that, if you have it, or if there's somebody here that can talk to that.
Right, and I didn't get any documentation on that. That was from the property owner and the applicant stating that his contractors had told him that. Um, he can come up and maybe shed a little more light on it.
Chairman, hold on. Are you done, Travis?
Yeah, that'd be the question I have.
I'll, I'll let the applicant come up afterwards and.
Okay.
Deb, do you have a question for Jason?
Yes. So the nearest road that's closest to this garage is 200 feet?
That's the nearest home. Uh, so I think I might have a picture. So it's this home right back here. It'd be 200 feet from the proposed structure.
So the, okay, say that again, Jason. From the proposed structure is, a structure is?
Approximately 200 feet from the proposed structure to this existing residence.
Okay, and the only one that would be affected on this, basically from the 21 feet, would be that neighbor.
He would be the most directly affected.
Yeah, it's not on their property, but it's four feet difference. So it's not affecting any roads or anything putting up this garage. It would just affect the neighbor, and there's no objections from the neighbors.
Correct. Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, Ron Roskneck.
You know, when you, they say physical hardship, and we keep mentioning topogra- topography, but I consider a physical hardship, we could expand that to being in a flood plain, uh, soil conditions or, uh, the rock shelf, I would consider that being a physical hardship. Not so much coming from the owner, but his contractor, who I'm assuming, you know, has some experience with this, so, uh, I don't have a problem with that request.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Jason, uh, staff recommended denial. So, you know, what they're proposing, as I see, is a 24 by 24-foot garage.
Right.
Do you see where that garage can be shifted to that degree and still maintain the same size and?
Right. Yeah, during my site visit, it did appear that these prop, these, uh, corner pins could be shifted this way, four feet. Uh, but then I did call and talk to the applicant, and he stated that there were issues with the rock shelf and excavating would need to be done, and it may compromise the foundation of the single-family residence.
Okay.
But again, that was straight from the applicant. I didn't get any, anything from his contractors.
So with the, with the pictures, does that shed need to be re- removed if they build, or is proposed, or is it come right up to?
That's my assumption.
Okay.
Okay. I am gonna let the applicant come up and address some. Just please identify yourself, sir, and maybe give a brief explanation of, uh, why you're asking for a variance.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity. Um.
Just need to identify yourself first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am Barry Bauer, and my wife Judy is in the audience as well. Uh, we have been the homeowners of this property for about 11 years. The, um, home to the north that's directly affected, um, was recently sold to another couple from out of state. So I contacted them and asked if they would have a problem if we built this garage, uh, in this location, and they didn't have any difficulty with it. Um, when the builder came into the property and we were trying to lay out where this would be, he was the one that informed me there was a 25-foot setback rule that I wasn't aware of, because I had intended to move it a little further back even than it sits. What's on the backside of that property is the driveway of the neighbor coming up the hill and then going over to his house. Um, we brought in the excavator. There's, what you can't see in this picture is there's also a well that's just off the back left corner of this, in this drawing. And so the manipulation of the angle of the property was to not disturb the well and not get too close to the house, where when they were excavating, there was a risk that they would crack the rock shelf that it sits on and damage the foundation of the house. When the house is originally built, they wanted to build a basement but couldn't because the rock was too solid there. And so there, when the excavator came up and looked at it, he said, "Well, you can move it over to the left, but then we're having to dig out of the hillside." What you can't see in this picture is the hill goes up to the left, and we can't go further. We can't turn it, or the left rear corner gets too close to the well. And so we positioned it where we thought it was the closest we could get to being within the guidelines of the, um, current code. And it made it so that the right back corner was more than 25 feet, but the left rear corner was 21 feet from the property line. So again, uh, once we had that exact, uh, number, I contacted the adjacent homeowner again and said, "This is what it's going to be. It's required to be 25 feet. It'll be 21 feet. Do you have a problem with that?" And he said, "No."
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Barry from the Commission? I, Barry, I will say, I have, I did look at the property next to it quite a while ago, so I, and I know this property. I drove up back and looked at the other one and seen where yours is also. You're on that corner one between Peak Cabin and Old Hill City, which I can't quite often look up there and see that property. So, you know, I haven't driven up to where your area is, but I've been up on the other side, and so I understand the topography that you, you're dealing with. So.
The, uh, shed does have to be removed. You were asked about that.
Okay.
Yes, because the.
All right. Thanks, Barry. Any questions for Barry from the Commission?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Deb.
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the variance with two conditions, based on topography as a hardship, and there's no objections from the, um, neighbors.
Okay, so there's been a motion?
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ross Connect?
That's, uh, that's VA 23-1.
Okay. With the two conditions, and any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to item B. I'll recognize Brittany, Planning Department Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Item B is variance VA 23-02 to allow an onsite wastewater treatment system on a lot smaller than one acre in size. Uh, the location of the property is 6920 Longview Road. Uh, the property is 1.38 acres. It is owned suburban residential district. And, um, staff takes a two-pronged approach when looking at variances, and I will just discuss the findings. Um, does it injure the neighborhood? Yes. The request would allow two lots under one acre to have individual septic systems. With a well on the lot, the density of the septics in the area could have a negative impact on water quality by contaminating wells. Does it conform to the neighborhood? No. It appears that all existing lots in the neighborhood are over one acre in size. Does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? No. A septic system may be installed on a lot that is greater than 20,000 square feet, provided that a private water supply is not located on the lot. Proposed Lot 15A has an existing well and septic system. Therefore, if it does not comply with Section 204M of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance or, uh, SDAR, which is the South Dakota Administrative Rule 74530116. Uh, does it conform to the comprehensive plan? Um, does it apply? Does it harm the public safety? The request would allow two lots under one acre to have individual septic systems. Um, the second prong, does a special condition, exceptional narrowness, topography, citing or the like, exist? No special condition exists to grant a variance. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the property through the city of Rapid City. Um, the second is no, no special condition exists, and no, no special condition exists that applicant's actions are a reason for the variance. Essentially, he's asking to subdivide it. Oops. Let me go to the next. So this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process, and I do want to make comment that this is located within Rapid Valley sanitary districts. that this is located within Rapid Valley Sanitary District's boundaries. Rapid Valley Sanitary District did comment that this property will have sanitary sewer within 400 feet of the property, as per Administrative Rule 74530107, when Apple Valley projects move forward in 2023. The septic tank would need to be crushed at such time the sanitary sewer is installed, and homeowner to connect to the service. So at this time, I would not recommend allowing a septic system unless that owner is willing to crush the newly installed septic system in the next 10 to 20 months. And I just put that administrative rule up on the screen. It just says no person may construct, install, or operate an onsite wastewater system where a public wastewater system is available. And then it gives the three criteria. At the time that the sanitary sewer is put in for Apple Valley, it will meet all three of these criteria, which is anticipated in early 2023. So with that, staff is recommending denial of variance VA 23-02, as there are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there any questions from the commission for Brittany?
No.
Oh, Mr. Drews.
So Brittany, in the future, they're, they're planning to equally divide this lot, this one point, nearly four acres into two parcels.
Correct. So here's the proposal that they have submitted.
Okay.
So this is the existing residence that has a septic and well, and then this is the proposed new lot.
So, and the septic is located where on the present one?
On this.
Okay.
These are where the tanks are, the drain field, I think, is approximately.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Travis.
Brittany, was the applicant, given all the information that you just gave to us, like from Rapid Valley Sanitary District and all that, was it made available to him so that he had, the applicant was aware of all that before moving forward?
Yes, I believe so. Cody Sack worked on this. He is actually out today, but he had indicated to me that he had discussed the options with the applicant. So if you see where the Apple Valley subdivision is, this is the area where the water and sewer line is coming through, so.
Do you have a follow-up?
No, that's good for staff.
And I do want to, sorry, I apologize.
Well, I didn't know if the applicant is here.
He is.
Okay, I'll let you finish, and then I'll call back.
And I do have one point of clarification, too, for this. This is in the Rapid City's one-mile jurisdiction for onsite systems.
Okay. Any further, Deb, did you have a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. The applicant, and I do have one speaker's request form for this item, so I'll let you speak and then call up the-
Good morning. My name's Bobby Sunday. Sorry, I'm always too tall for these things. I don't know how to fix this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. That was all a lot of good news to me, and I absolutely wasn't aware of most of what was just said there for point number one. Cody's head was spinning about this thing, just like the cities, these complications.
Can you speak a little bit?
I'm sorry. When we mixed the city in with the county and all of the rules that applied, but I think Alex has been confused about this. Cody was absolutely very confused. He did not tell me really any of that information. The only thing that was discussed was that, yes, we agreed that Rod Penples Development is happening in the next year or two. Rob personally told me it may be more like 18 months before there'll be water and sewer on Longview. So if I had known all this, that would be, that would have been nice. And I think in the future, I'll make it a point to meet with Brittany rather than the other newer folks, because I know it's an extreme lot of data to try and understand when you work there. But, so as you see on the map, these lots kind of seem to exist the way they are. They're large lots. They're going to be much larger than Apple Valley. And to me, this is kind of an extenuating circumstance, or a timing technicality, because I can't do anything right now until there is water and sewer there. And there already is a septic on this lot. They're large lots. You've got two approaches. Everything is approved, approvable, as far as the zoning and all of the regulations, except for this septic issue, which I honestly didn't even understand. They were talking about a well and a septic, and I tried to understand. I've been in real estate 27 years. But anyway, so I think it's important to know that I can't do anything. I'd have to wait for maybe two years and sit on this lot. We've done the extensive remodel. We're trying to help people from Ellsworth and the community in general have a nice property. There's literally about 150,000 that went into the house. And if I can't do anything with it, I'll have to rent it and probably have pets that are, we all know how the motion on support animal stuff goes, and it really wasn't the plan to rent it. It was to offer it as a new house, new remodeled house, and sell the large lot, which is much larger than Apple Valley's subdivision lots are going to be. So literally, like maybe three or four times larger, I'm guessing. So six to seven tenths of an acre is obviously a large lot. It's three times the size of a countryside lot.
So, Mr. Sunday, part of the stuff that you said you didn't understand was that the Rapid Valley Sanitary Sewers District, understanding that water and sewer is going to be coming, and they're going to want that hooked up first, and that's pretty much why the denial is in there. So it's really, once that runs through, which is planned, you'll be able to split the lots and do what you need to do, but they really don't want two septic systems. And the ordinance under an acre is the original.
Well, if-
So if you split this lot, what you're saying is you're going to put another septic system in on the other side in order to sell it?
Well, I would like to be able to get the plat approved, and then it would be up to that owner, and they very well could likely wait. They probably will wait until there's water and sewer available, but it may be two years. So this is a technicality that allows the plating to go through. Nobody will construct a septic system if there is water and sewer there, and it'd be great if it's sooner than later, but it would help everybody move along.
You're kind of putting the cart before the horse. You want to split the lots and then sell it to somebody and say it's your responsibility to get sewer and water. You can't build nothing until that. So you're kind of putting it on the new owners for selling.
Well, a septic system-
I'm just thinking out loud, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, if I have to wait two years on that technicality, if there is a septic system in place, I guess it's up to you, and that's fine if the water is there. Somebody wants to build now, they could have a septic system. And then if they're forced to convert to the sewer, that's okay. Or maybe they wait until the sewer is in place. That'd be up to the landowner to deal with that. But to tie this up for up to two years on this technicality, it just seems real unreasonable.
Okay. I'm going to go to the commission real quick. Ms. Hagcock.
So you had, you said you knew nothing about this, but you did a report with Cody, and it's written all in our reports about the septic, about there's no special conditions. I asked one of the, Cody wasn't there, if he had discussed that with this, you need to hook up with water and sewer in the future. I'm with Lloyd. You have two lots, seen it before. You put a variance on this to do one septic and one well. Then what happens if the neighbors don't get along, or they have issues? That's not a really good thing. You're also, sir, a realtor on a property that you bought, and probably before you buy it, like most of us do, we look and see what are the issues on a property, and if we can split the lots, or if we can put the septic on there. So I don't think you're out anything at this point in the future, because there's, there's two things. You're going to get, I believe with Lloyd, that you're going to get two people that you think they should hook up on, unless, what I would do is put a dry water and sewer in there if I was going to sell those properties to the road. It's what most people do, knowing that that hookup's coming. That would be fair to the applicants. And then, number two, if you read state law and you know septics, your lots are too small to put a septic on each one. So, and I'm pretty sure Cody told you about the onsite wastewater treatment plant and the well, and the contamination you would do on the well, because that's not something our staff would not tell you. So I believe some of it, if you would have read the report, would have told you anything that Cody didn't tell you, sir. So to say you didn't know, to say that it's going to be 18 months, you bought this purchase of this property, probably not looking at all of the issues on the property before you bought it. So the only one would be out, would be you at this point, until you sell those lots, which I think at that point, the lots are big enough for that area to hook up to water and sewer, sir. So if anything, I would deny without prejudice on this, so you can come back later. I wouldn't just deny it. That way, we'd have a chance to move forward on it in the future, sir.
What I was speaking about, what she was presenting, primarily all of that matrix with the items up there, that was, was not discussed with me. None of those line items was really what I was mostly referring to there, but-
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions before I sit down?
Mr. Roskin.
So Johnny, that property sold last year?
It was early, let's see.
Jan, January 14th?
Robert.
The property that I purchased?
Excuse me.
Bobby.
Yeah. So, yeah, somebody mentioned, you know, that, so you're the owner, right?
Yes.
That, well, it's just hard for me to go against Rapid Valley Sanitary District, and their recommendation is not to do that, because I don't want to see you put a concrete tank in and have to tear it out in two years. But Deb had, I thought Deb had a good compromise, and that's to deny without prejudice, so that we can try to work this stuff out.
In the future.
Bobby, I do have one speaker request.
Okay.
I'd like to let them say their piece, and I'll let you come back up and rebut.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, Bobby. I do have a speaker request form underneath. Am I correct for this item? Mr. William Brady? Is it for this item? Or is it, because you got on your Wind River variance. But it says for this item, 21B.
You asked the question, what?
William, is this the item that you wanted to speak on?
Yes.
Because on the top, it says Wind River variance. So, okay. So you wanted to talk on this Longview variant?
Right.
Okay. I'll recognize you, William.
Okay. The property that you're talking about, I have lived in the valley.
So William, you got, you have to identify yourself for the records. We're getting recorded, too. If you could, please.
Pardon?
Identify yourself for the record.
William Brady.
Okay.
The prop, the location you have for the drain field is wrong. I helped Mrs. Grass, who owned the property before. The gentleman has it now. The septic you have on the drawing is correct. That's where the lids are. I helped Mrs. Grass mow that field and stuff like this, and it had the most beautiful patch of Canadian thistle you ever saw in your life. Construction-grade weeds they had over there. So the drain field is about 50, 60 feet to the west, east, excuse me, to the east. Okay, so what they're showing there, if you're going to try to set a house or anything out there, you're going to be right middle of the, you'd be standing in your own bucket, basically, and the ground gets awful soft. Okay, yeah. Okay, you can see where the septic tanks are, yes. The drain field is probably another 40 or 50 feet to the east of that, to the second tank lid, or the second cover. And it does have two tanks, because she would have the things pumped about every two or three years.
Okay.
But the drain field, and as Bob Anderson used, which is south of there, put up the hay a couple of times. And when you drive around out there, you had to watch where you drive around, or you'd sink in. So the septic tanks are correct, but the drain field is farther to the east. And being that the neighbor's not here, to the east, I'm pretty sure she wouldn't want to have it there either. And like you say, trying to hook up two houses on one well, you better hope you don't have the Hatfields and McCoys show up.
So may I, it's correct to gather one that you're not in support of this?
No.
Okay. And you're saying the drain fields are on the proposed second lot?
Uh, where the nine foot, nine foot three number is.
Okay.
Okay, you go back to the, which would be the northeast corner. Well, about, let's see, I'm trying to figure this out here. About where the 0636 number is, that's about where the Canadian thistle patch was. And they, don't make a difference how much dry weather we had, they were always growing just great.
Okay.
So that's where the drain field is, probably about 20, 25 feet long. So I don't know if the drain field is long enough for the house that was originally there. She, her and her husband built the place in the early 60s.
Okay. Well, William, on our agenda with this, staff is recommending denial, and from what I gather, you're recommending denial.
Yes.
Okay. So thanks for coming up and explaining what the history of the property to the commission.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brittany, do you have a follow-up?
I do. I just want to just make some comments on something that was said. As it exists right now, it is over an acre, as it exists without the subdivision.
Yeah.
The well and septic could stay there until such time, if Rapid Valley Sanitary District wants them to connect under that administrative rule, they have the authority to make the existing structure connect. I think the other concern is that putting a new structure on and making two new structures. So I think, I just wanted to clarify that, make that understood, that how it exists right now, it can exist until such time Rapid Valley Sanitary District would have to initiate that requirement. We, we do not initiate that requirement. What we're asking for is, in our zoning ordinance, it does require that you have a one acre minimum for a well and a septic. The state administrative rules, so in order for us to approve a building permit on that proposed Lot B, we would have to have a variance. This variance would have to be approved. The state would have to grant a variance under their administrative rules, and the city would have to agree to it. So just to understand that that's, would be the process in order for us to issue a building permit on that.
So Brittany, what's been discussed is maybe not approving without prejudice. Is that a good motion, or is it just to deny without?
I would do it without prejudice. That would give them an opportunity, because if the city would allow them to plat it with maybe some conditions that this lot couldn't be developed until such time the sewer came through, I don't want to take away that ability for them to do that.
Thank you.
So I think this was a requirement from the city's plating process. So that way, maybe he could go back to the city and say, you know, if there's, they could stipulate something on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I have a question. So how would this all play out? Let's just assume the city says you can go ahead and plat it, but you can't put a septic out there. There's a drain field that goes over into that area. I guess now I'm kind of concerned that, you know, if it was ever made where somebody could build a home over there, who's responsible for relocating that drain field? Is it going to be the current owner, or if this, or when the lines come through, then it doesn't matter, because everybody's going to be required to connect?
Right. So if, it's not plating through the county, but if it was, and we knew that we would require some kind of easement or something be shown on the plat to that location of that drain field?
Okay, I think that kind of answers my question.
I'll recognize Ms. Hagcock.
I'd like to deny without prejudice, variance VA 23-2 Wind River LLC.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Laster to deny without prejudice. Any further discussion, information, public?
Mr. Chair.
Bobby, are you okay with?
Robert.
Is it Bobby or Robert? You just need to come up here and speak.
Just so you-
I'm going by the paperwork, and one says Rob. Okay.
Yes. Thank you. This is a learning process. I'm more familiar with the city and the last items that she just mentioned with the state and the city. I mean, we're all learning. None of us even understand this, which is, and I apologize to, you know, I've forgotten ahead of ourselves here. And as far as that septic, I appreciate the information. That's good to know. The surveyor located it. I guess we could have somebody go out there and further put a chip in the drain field and figure out exactly where it is. And also, as he was pointing, as he was noticing the numbers on the map, there is a utility easement, as we all know, that runs along those property lines. So it's possible that even if it does encroach, it would stay within that 20-foot buffer of utility line easement.
So, you, you pretty much, you heard what's happening today, deny without prejudice. And so, when you go through the city, you, you know what you can work with, and you can work with Brittany. So, that, it's actually a good motion for you.
Right. Yes, thank you.
You bet. So, any further discussion from public? Commission? See none? All in favor of the motion on the floor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd look for a motion to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments.
So, moved?
It's been moved by Laster, seconded by.
Sorry.
Haggard.
I'm having a cramp in my.
Any discussion? Public? Commission? See none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of Board of Adjustments, and we're going to go to uncontested hearings. And I'll recognize Jason.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda Item C is rezone 22-32 to rezone 9.78 acres from Agriculture District to Rural Residential District. The applicants are Shirley and Robert Brownell. Their surveyor is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 13396 Silver Mountain Road. It is currently 9.78 acres, zoned Agriculture District. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. When basing their recommendation, staff does look at zoning within one-half mile of the property. Uh, this is current zoning. You can see in dark green is open space, light green is Agriculture District, yellow is Rural Residential District, and red is Highway Service District. Uh, this is the future land use. We do look at this as well. Rural, again, Rural Residential is in yellow, Highway Service is in red, and open space is in dark Uh, we do look at roads and streets and infrastructure as well. Silver Mountain Road is a collector. It is twenty-four foot wide and paved. It is within a sixty-six foot wide public right-of-way. There is a private access easement to the subject property. It is ten foot wide and it's gravel. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property and create two lots. Uh, here is the applicant's layout plan now, that is currently being heard, uh, being reviewed by staff under Layout Plan 22-59. Uh, future land use of the property is Rural Residential, so it does match the comprehensive plan. The request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations, and the comprehensive plan viewed at 2040. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone 22-32.
Thank you, Jason. At this time, I have no speaker request forms for this item. Is there any questions from the commission? From Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I would move to approve.
Move to approve rezone, RZ 22.
RZ 22-32.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Haggard. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? See none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come to Item D, and I believe we have somebody on Zoom for this. Okay, so we'll start out with the presentation there. We have the applicant on Zoom.
Commissioners, I would ask that we consider Items D and F together, because one is for the north-south section line, and one is for the east-west, um, because they surround those properties. So, I think the discussion together would be appropriate, but just have separate motions, or, sorry, yeah, D and F. Not the waivers, just the actual construction.
Just D and F.
Because one has to do with the section line here and here, but it has to do with this property in general.
So, Commissioners, what Brittany's asking for is not unusual, is to, is to, uh, set aside the rules, change the rules to take up Items D and F both at the same time, suspend the rules. So, it looks like, uh, Deb, did you have a motion to suspend the rules?
I have.
Deb's made the motion to suspend the rules to take up Items D and F both at the same time, but, but vote on them separately.
Correct. I would second that.
And there's a second from Mr. Laster. Any discussion on doing that? Public? See none? All in favor? Indicate, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brittany. D and F, please just kind of keep us where we need to go.
Sure. Well, one is for the north-south property line, and one's for the east west, or northwest, uh, or, sorry, north-south section line and east-west section line. Um, so Item D is to construct seven hundred and forty-five feet of road within the section line right-of-way between thirteen and fourteen, so it would be this section. And Item F is to construct seven hundred and twenty feet of road within the section line right-of-way between thirteen and twenty-four, which is here. Uh, the intent, um, currently, uh, these two properties to the north have been developed, and there was road construction in the section line, um, approved by this commission to construct the road. Um, this property owner has purchased this and would like to continue on constructing the section line to the south and to the east. Uh, the intent is to, um, create two lots here, two ten-acre lots, I believe, or two five-acre lots. Um, this was rezoned to Ranchat at a previous, uh, commission meeting. Um, so, I'm just trying to see, obviously, the Highway Department is opposed to waiving any road construction requirements in the section line, um, outside of Ordinance fourteen. Uh, these two road constructions will, um, they're looking at a lot here and a lot here. Uh, so they're looking at improving the road from, from approximately here down. Let's see. And you can see some previous approvals. So, there's about twenty feet, six hundred feet, twenty-foot road here, four hundred of twenty-foot. And then this was constructed, the sixteen feet. These two had previous road construction in the section line. Not sure if you remember these two, um, but this is for this lot. Coming down is from approximately here, and then down and over. This was rezoned, again, to Ranchat to allow two five-acre lots. Um, we are not aware if they're going to eloquently describe them, or if they're going to plaid them. Both are allowed. Um, my, if I had to guess, I would say they probably eloquently described them, because they don't need to plaid them, um, with that, since the zoning meets the requirements and they have access. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of road construction in the section line, um, CS 2301, uh, with eight conditions. That is with it going into Ordinance fourteen standards, and that is Item D. And Item E, or sorry, Item F, is uh, approval of road construction in section line CS 2302, um, which is to Ordinance fourteen standards.
Okay. So, that's what staff recommendations for approval on those two?
Correct.
Okay.
Two Ordinance, two Ordinance fourteen standards.
Yep. It doesn't say that in the motion.
Yeah, so E and G would be the, the exceptions.
Okay, okay. So, is the commission have any questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Brittany, the lots to the north and the lots to the east are, are, let's go to the lots to the east. I'm just curious, how are they accessed, uh, for the owners to get to them?
These ones?
There's two lots to, to the east, adjacent to the east.
Hmm.
That's the section line.
This one right here? Yes, this is the section line. And then there's, hmm, they would have to access on either Justice Lane or through this section line. But it's not improved. They don't have any improvements or any development.
They've got, they've just got section line access, whatever.
Correct. And we consider that access.
Okay.
So, they would just have to open it up and to build the road in it, but they do have what we consider legal access.
If those folks wanted to build a home, then would they have to do Ordinance fourteen from that southwest corner?
They would have to improve it from the center of this to their lot, yes. Just like these, they improved it to here. They're requesting to improve it to here, and then if they wanted to improve it, they'd have to do.
By understanding that, then they, there's no problem building the road. And I'm guessing that they want to deviate from Ordinance fourteen to a certain point.
They do. That is the, the next request that Highway would present.
Okay.
That's the exceptions.
Ms. Haggard.
So, the one with just the piece, the first part, it's the top, the lot above it, and only has it right to their house, right?
About right here.
That's one we approved, how long ago? Not much?
Twenty twenty-one.
Yep. And the guy said, well, I asked him, so what about the rest of your lot? He goes, well, I can only afford to do my lot. Now, the guy above him has to do the rest of his lot, plus his, to make a road. So, he did exactly what I thought was going to happen. He had somebody else that had to build his road. Um, if they're willing to buil- build it, that's fine, but I don't think that's anymore, letting people just go to their lot, that's what I keep saying, and not finish the rest of their property, meaning the property line for road, is, is very fair to the, to the next person that has to build that road. And then they start not building to Ordinance fourteen standards at the top, and saying, we're just doing right to here. These people don't have it. And then the next people were saying, okay, now you need Ordinance fourteen standards. So, what Joe was saying when the last guy was in here on this property is exactly what's happening. Now, the rest of the people want to build the same way. And that's why I said, if I can remember, I wasn't in agreement with it, because what happens is, you start a mess. You let one person do it, because it's one lot, and even if you're close, um, with twenty-foot roads or something, um, you still have, is that a county road that has to be plowed?
If I may, if you guys want to get the construction within the section line stuff taken care of, and then we can go to the exception requests, which we're talking about now, so then we can move to the highway stuff.
Well, I apologize, but I just wanted to see if it was county road.
It's already a county road, uh, by state statute. We just don't maintain it currently.
Okay. And if it was to Ordinance fourteen standards, would it be maintained?
Uh, currently, so as our ordinance that was approved in May, I believe it has currently seven residents on it, if I counted correctly. I may have not counted correctly, but I believe it has seven residents that it serves, so it would be, it would fall under our minimum maintenance, so it would be bladed at a minimum twice a year, and snow removal would be done on it, uh, at a six inches or more. Um, so, while it's not currently on our road resolution, um, here in the near future, it will be part of our county road. So, this is a county road, both the north-south section line and the east-west section line. They will become and are already by state statute county roads, so.
And if it was a couple of people, it'd make a difference. Why I'm saying that is, we're going from, uh, saying that it has to be fourteen standards to, to wanting exceptions to it. And again, are we going to continue it? And then what happens above it, Joe, when you have a sixteen-foot into a twenty-four-foot?
So, I, my assumption, and, and what would probably need to happen, is the county highway, and we'll have to go in there and improve that to a twenty-four-foot road on the, the backs of the rest of the taxpayers in, in Penny Creek County, who didn't benefit from the, the construction of this road, so.
Okay, I'm going to reel this in.
I'm just saying that so the applicant knows.
Yeah. And the next one that's coming up, Deb, is, I think we'll follow that discussion. Right now, staff's recommending approval to fourteen standards for these two items, and then, uh, uh, the exception, exception request is coming up after that.
Well, what I mean by that, Lloyd, is to explain the fourteen standards. That's why we're talking about that now. And then we talked about the next, they have an information on it, because they're not Ordinance fourteen standards above it.
And Mr. Chair, I have a question for clarification.
Laster.
Joe, you've seen the packet, right?
Which portion of it, Travis?
Well, this particular map. I just want to make sure I'm looking at this correctly. What, what Commissioner Haggard was talking about, the one that we gave permission to do the short one, was this one right here, just to his lot? Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Oh, was it down to that one? No, I think it was this one.
Yep.
And this is where, this is where he's being at. This is where they're trying to get down now to.
This one and twenty, this one and twenty-one, and now this one and twenty-two.
Okay, so this is that one. So, the road has been improved all the way to here?
Correct.
And now he, now this applicant's going to bring it all the way down?
Here, and then all the way.
And all the way across. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm hearing what's actually been done.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions on these two items? Uh, correct, um, D and F. We're going to do them separate, so I'd look for a motion for Item D.
Move approval.
Second.
Staff recommendation.
Okay, uh.
With eight conditions.
Yep. Deb's made the motion to approve road construction within the section line right-of-way, CS 23-01 with eight conditions. Correct. And it was seconded by Laster. Any public discussion? Any more discussion from the commission? Hear none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we come to Item F. The road construction within the section line right-of-way, CS 2302.
Didn't you just do D?
So, basically, so you have, um, D and F, right, are together. Those are the construction within the section lines, and now you're going to get G and E.
I thought we were doing.
For the exceptions.
Oh, we're doing.
You wanted to go to E. I thought we were taking those both up at the same time, and then?
And F.
Yeah, D and.
D and F.
Yeah, that's.
Yep, D and F.
I started reading F. That's what I was reading.
Yep.
Yeah, D and F.
Sorry, Lloyd, my fault.
And then E and G.
I'm tracking where he was going.
Okay, so we're on the right track. We're on Item F.
I'm not tracking.
Because we suspended the rules to take up Items D and F, so we're going to deal with F right now. Um, this comes with a recommendations from staff, and their, and theirs is to approve road construction within the section line right-of-way, CS 2302 with eight conditions. This is Item F. Is there any discussion from, uh, the audience? Any from the commission? I'd look for a motion on Item F.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve and, by Roskin, seconded by Laster, to approve Item F, as I read. Any discussion? See none? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, now we go back to Item E. Item E is from the highway. It's an exception request from Ordinance fourteen ER 1-1823, from Brian DeShane. And Brian is online, correct?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Okay. So, I would actually, uh, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department, uh, John Smith, Pennington County Highway Department, request that you do the same thing with E and G this time, since they're, I mean, they're similar requests, so and our recommendations are the same on both, so.
Okay.
Move to suspend the rules, so we can take up, uh, E and G.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to take up Items A and G.
A and G.
But vote on them separately.
E and G.
Oh, E and G. But we will, we'll discuss them at the same time, but, uh, vote on them separately. Any public discussion on that? See, any more discussion? All in favor? Suspend the rules for Items E and G?
Aye.
Indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Joe?
So, just a suggestion for both me and Brittany, next time, we'll have the exception request together and the construction in the section line request together, so it's a little less confusing. Um, again, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. So, in front of you here, you have a request to extend 153rd Avenue South, approximately seven hundred and forty-five feet, um, Section thirteen fourteen, Township One North, to not submit engineered road plans, or reduce the road width to sixteen foot with six inches of gravel and do a V-ditch on each side, um, and the culverts as shown in Exhibit SK. Staff, staff recommends denial of ER 2023-01, 1823-1, as there's no practical difficulty preventing strict application of, uh, Pennington County Ordinance fourteen. However, if, uh, the board disagrees, the, with the, and approves the request, the staff, staff recommends the following conditions. Road width be shown no less than twenty feet with six inches of gravel surfacing. Ditches be built to Ordinance fourteen specification. Regardless of the roadway width and the size and location of all cross culverts will be approved by the Highway Department. So, um, staff comments on our findings, the topographical, so physical and surrounding shape and topography hardship. We said no. The topographical conditions are conducive to building Ordinance fourteen standards, therefore, there is no hardship. Uh, detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property, we said yes. Uh, not building to Ordinance fourteen will hinder snow removal and gravel maintenance operation and increase safety concerns, especially if built at the end, built at a road le- with less than the ordinance. Um, increased traffic congestion on public roads, uh, we said no. At this time, the proposed request is for a dead-end road. We said no, at this time, the proposed request is for a dead-end road. However, Pennington County does have concerns that the section line cannot go south all the way to compute a loop for future development. Increased danger of fire and hinder emergency services? Our answer was yes, at the proposed road width of sixteen foot, ingress and egress for emergency vehicles would be difficult at best or hindered. In danger of public safety? We also said yes, a proposed width of sixteen foot. It is possible that the public safety could be hindered by roadway departures, departures and head-on collisions. Diminishment of property values within the area? No, you're improving access, so you're going to improve the property value. So as stated a little bit earlier, these section lines are by state statute thirty-one three, oh, and I forget what statute it is off the top of my head here. We put those statutes in there. They are county roads, so allowing these to be built less than our ordinance fourteen, eventually, these are gonna be, I mean, it is already a county road, it's just not something that we maintain currently. Once we get our road resolution put together, all these section lines that have been improved will be on the county highway to determine their level of maintenance after we put that resolution. So as I stated earlier, this one would fall under the minimum maintenance category with a blading of twice a year and snow removal at six inches or more. So with that, I'll see if you have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Roskinet.
Joe, would you put the map up there? So I want to start going south from Longview.
Yep.
Okay, so when you turn off Longview, start going south. What do you got for an existing road right now, twenty-foot gravel?
So this is the map that he was provided, it says twenty-foot, yes. I don't know, Sean, did you go out and verify all this?
I was carefully out there.
So we had our, our engineering staff go out and measure, I believe, they didn't start at Longview, they started kind of north of where he was at, so.
Okay, so you go south, how many feet south where you got a twenty-foot gravel surface?
So about, looks about a thousand foot south is where it turns to a sixteen-foot wide.
That thousand feet, coming off Longview, going south for a thousand feet, it's twenty-foot surface, then what is it after that?
It appears to be a sixteen-foot surface.
Sixteen?
I believe so. And I apologize, I didn't get a chance to go out there and do a site visit on this one, so.
And if you go south on the sixteen, how, how, what's the length of the area that's sixteen feet?
It's about another thirty-five hundred foot.
And then we're asking, and he's asking for variance, or he's asking that he can deviate from ordinance fourteen for sixteen or twenty-foot?
Twenty. To sixteen feet is what he would like to do.
Sixteen? What's your thoughts on twenty?
I, I mean, we can live with twenty, but ultimately, I, I want the commission to keep in mind that it's going to be a county road, right? And maintaining a sixteen-foot wide road, or even a twenty-foot, right, foot-wide road, I mean, you can look at some of the, the roads up in the hills that are fairly narrow. I know Bogus Jim is one, and it's, it's difficult at best to, to maintain properly. So you want between, you know, twenty to twenty-four foot at a minimum to maintain it properly with the equipment that we have.
If you expand, you'd have to go to Rapid and have to do that. I kind of looked at it, so if you go to the east on the, along the south side of that, there's two lots to the east, and then after that, I don't, going east, I don't see, you know, you're just going into pasture land. Looks to me like Longview is your main east-west corridor. So if somebody wanted to go access their properties to the east, they would probably go along view and then go south of, in existing section line. So I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I understand we want to build good roads, but I'm just looking at the surrounding neighborhood there, and I just.
So this section line, the north-south one could potentially tie all the way down to computer loop, and the east-west one would tie over to one fifty-fourth.
So currently, this is, this is right here is where we're talking.
Right.
So what, just a mile to the east is one fifty-fourth, and you can kind of see all the development that's going along in this area, right? I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of development. These lots, yes, there's a, I believe there's a ranch, right, it just looks like a house right in the center there, but they're already, I mean, there's some preliminary lots here. I believe they're all under the same ownership, but there's, there's quite a bit of development going on in the area.
Are you done, Ron?
Yeah.
Miss Hancock.
Well, that kind of tells you what's gonna happen in the district. Plus, we always said, if, if we move in Rapid City or the surrounding area of Pennington County, it's probably gonna go east. In this case, it's showing it's continuing from the top of Longview down, and it's not gonna stop. And that section line is probably gonna be part of where they're gonna develop, so. I think, I don't remember if I go to no or yes, but I think what we've done is we put some of this cost on the backs of the taxpayers by doing sixteen-foot roads. And in the future, I won't be doing that, just because sometimes we say one lot, and we've been saying that all the way down, and now we're at six, twenty feet to sixteen feet, and there's another sixteen feet or twenty feet or whatever. That's, again, that's all the taxpayers, that's not just this district that's paying that. So again, I'll be saying no to this, even though if you want to do the twenty-foot, I'm, I'm good with that, but still the twenty-four, do we start? I have a heartache with some of this, where it's like, okay, we already did this, and we should make it right and keep doing it at sixteen feet. But again, if you look at this area, this was, topography-wise, like it was floodplain after that or a cliff, that'd make, make the difference for me changing my mind, but that's not. This area's gonna be developed, and the more we keep putting sixteen-foot roads, the more the taxpayers are gonna keep paying for it, so. And this area, I think, is gonna continue for a while, so.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Deb. Again, we are on items E and G, and I'll recognize more person, then I'll go to the applicant, Mr. Laster.
Correct me if I, if I'm wrong, Joe, I remember us talking about this, we've talked about this a lot. If we're gonna do an exception, I think I've made it clear that I would say that if we do it, we say it's a no-maintenance road, because I don't want someone to put it in at a spec less than what we, as a county, would maintain, and then we're maintaining a road that's less than a spec that we feel is appropriate. I think I've said that to you here on the diocese many a times, and that's why, I do believe Commissioner Hancock and I voted no on that, on that last one, too. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure we did, because we had extensive conversation about it. I'd like to see these roads, if, if we have to maintain them, they need to be maintained, they need to be put in at the, or at the size that's requested for the county to maintain it. If they don't want them to be maintained, I think they need to ask for them to be considered no-maintenance roads, and then maybe we can have that conversation. But I don't know, did we ever determine legally that if you turn it into a no-maintenance road, how? I know there was some conversation on that before.
We have no obligation to maintain it. All we're, I believe it's state statute states that all we're responsible for is a removal of man-made objects.
Debris, yeah, major things.
Megan, refer to the state's attorney's office, so as you guys know, this isn't necessarily my area of expertise, but I helped a little bit with this ordinance. The ordinance doesn't really, from my recollection, allow for that, because there are too many people that already live out there.
Does it say may? I, C C, I don't know, because I didn't write it.
Mr. Chair.
On the north south.
Making you?
Yeah. I mean, I'd have to do a little bit more research if you wanted a definitive answer on that.
Okay, Mr. Drews.
Well, I'm, you know, we say that there's, you know, no real difficulty in doing it, but there is a, a financial difficulty, I think, on, on behalf. And so I'm much more comfortable with the twenty-foot. Sixteen, I agree, it's probably too narrow for this. I, I don't disagree with what Commissioner Laster has had to say that relative to the no-maintenance on it. But at the same time, I just, I, I think we need to be practical with these people that are doing it as far as the financial responsibility that, that they have in, in putting this road in.
If I, if I may, you know, Brittany stated earlier that they do plan to subdivide this. So, you know, subdivision means that you're gonna build a house, and you're gonna sell it, and you're gonna make money. So should the, the rest of the taxpayers be burdened with getting this road up to the ordinance fourteen standard for somebody else to make money? That's just my two cents.
Okay, I am gonna go, let the applicant speak.
Okay.
He's, he's probably been sitting pretty quiet. Brian Duchesne, if you're there, please identify yourself right now. You know, I know it's difficult on Zoom to hear and stuff, but the discussion has been, number one, deny. Number two, approve to a twenty-foot, you know, a variance with the twenty-foot road. Are, those are the two options that have been discussed so far. So Brian, can you explain to us why we should either go with a twenty-foot road with six-inch gravel surface, or go, why you shouldn't have to build to an ordinance standard fourteen? Brian or Debbie there? I can't hear you.
Looks like they're on mute, both of them.
I'll let Joe and try to connect with them, but Travis, you had another question you, or did you forget by now?
Lloyd, I think, well, I think he's unmuted, though.
Is he, Brian, you there?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, many of y'all know that I've been watching prices of land, and I know that some of these places are selling higher than, than they should be, you know, in a normal market. And so I, I think it does go to what Joe was saying, you know, they're, they're partitioning these off, they're gonna be selling them for people to build. Individuals are making more money than what they purchase these at. So I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to make them bring a road to a certain spec, since we know that they're divvying them up out there. And actually, that's right, one of the section lines, I run my cattle, so I'm actually kind of familiar with that particular area out there and what those houses are going for, so. And that piece of land that's out there, because we wanted to buy some that we couldn't buy, so.
All right, thanks, Travis, have we gotten them through yet? But anyhow, if we can't get them through, from what I've heard from this commission is either, there's two possible motions for this. One would be denial, with going with staff's recommendations, or there could be, if commissioners approve, they can request a twenty-foot, twenty-foot wide road with six inches gravel. Ditches will be built to ordinance fourteen specifications, regardless of road width. The size and location of the cross culverts will be approved by highway. That's a possible second motion.
Chairman.
Sure.
Could I ask a question of Joe?
I don't know why Mr. Duchesne, we can't hear him, it's on his end, he's not muted on this end, but he did send a text that he is willing to do the twenty-foot road.
So he's willing to do twenty, and I see that, okay. I think the first person I heard was Deb.
Okay, so Joe, or Megan, can we put it a no-maintenance once they start? Because I thought we talked about it on that sixteen-foot, too, but about putting no-maintenance when the guy just wanted to do a piece of his to start this? So can we put no-maintenance on past the twenty-foot, thousand-foot off of Longview into all this?
My suggestion would we, we just make it all a no-maintenance road by resolution, and you guys would have to direct us to bring that resolution back. We just don't have one drafted currently, not knowing where this was gonna go. We didn't want to expend the staff time to, to draft the resolution. So that would be my suggestion, is to make one fifty-third a no-maintenance road, and the applicants to, to bear all costs for the posting of the sign, the no-maintenance sign, any and all costs. I don't know, Megan, do you remember how we needed to word that? So.
I'm saying that because from now on, if we're just gonna keep, and they just want to keep building, and they don't want to go to the standards, and they want to go sixteen and twenty, if we're gonna make it no-maintenance, you can do the sixteen-foot and continue on, because we're not gonna maintain that they are, meaning, to be fair, instead of going sixteen, 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 then going twenty, you see what I'm saying, Joe? And if you're.
Absolutely, I mean, if, if there's a resolution that is on the books, and when we redo our resolution here, we're looking at probably June to get the, our entire road resolution done after we meet with the city and Box Elder. That, that continues on to be a no-maintenance section line, I am absolutely good with that, as long as we're not gonna maintain it. I think still for, for fire and emergency ingress, egress, I still do think that the road needs to be twenty-foot for ingress and egress of your emergency services.
Right, Mike.
Can I clarify this?
Well, bottom line is, I guess I'm not clarifying, I'm not clarified yet, Lloyd, I'm not trying to be rude, but what I'm saying is, can we legally, from that sixteen-foot on, make it no-maintenance? And then they have the understanding that, you know, we don't want to take, and, and we have said this over and over again, that we don't want to take roads that aren't gonna be up to standards. So that way, in the future, people know when they decide they want to do less than what the county needs them to do, that we're gonna put them on no-maintenance. And unfortunately, that continues this on, and so the people next, again, will have no-maintenance. So that property is understood, when you're buying a property on this road, it's gonna have a no-maintenance on it. If they want to do sixteen-foot at this point, and they agree to that at the no-maintenance, and it's legal, I'm good with that.
So I texted Tracy Dollson Decker, she's really the expert on this in her office. Hopefully, she can come down and talk. So if you guys want to table this, and maybe have her come down if she's free, that might be the best way to get the correct answer, because I just can't do the research while I'm in here, so.
Well, here's what I, I've heard so far, is that this mission is okay with the twenty-foot with the six-foot. The ditches be built to the ordinance, the size, location, and cross culverts, that's what I've heard. What I've also heard is Joe saying that they, highway department wants to bring, would have to bring back a resolution saying it'd be a no-maintenance for that road, and would like the applicant to bear those costs. So with the, the three stipulations, if there was a such motion, a fourth motion could be, or condition could be put on there that, provided that highway department brings back a resolution of no-maintenance, and we can either add that, or we could just put, let staff do that, and put the applicant pays all costs for the signs, but no maintenance road.
Yeah, I know, I know for sure that the resolution has to come back in front of you, that is a requirement. As far as whether legally we can make a section line that's improved with this amount of people living off of it, a no-maintenance road, that is just not my area of expertise, I didn't do that research, that would be Tracy, so.
Up until eleven. County, I believe the statute reads that, actually, I think the statute's in your book, I believe, or in your packet here.
May.
Basically, if it's used less than or intermittently by commercial traffic, I believe you can, you can either designate it no-maintenance or minimal maintenance, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
So Joe, did you mention that you have not been on to that personally?
Our staff has been on there, we had our, in your packet there, and I've been on it all, so, quite some time ago.
We got any photographs?
There's quite, yeah, there's extensive photographs in your, in your packet there, so. Our staff actually rec, or actually measured it here, it looks like she measured it right at this gentleman's driveway to be seventeen feet, and then it's, or seventeen feet here, then sixteen feet, then it's actually fourteen and a half feet, then it's twelve-foot clear down here. So the, and you can kind of see in your pictures there, we took pictures, and there's lines drawn in where she took the measurements as far as the roadway width and everything. So ultimately, and then I, I think, I don't know if this is possible or not, but, you know, we need to, to try and put into some sort of, if the commission's going to allow these roads to be built, we need to put some sort of skin in the game for these applicants and put some sort of surety down to, so the highway department can ensure that these roads are built to whatever stipulations or that they're built to ordinance fourteen. So we did a little bit of research this morning, we realigned Willsey Road, it was about a half-mile road, north of Walcott Way, so the, the costs are gonna be a little bit different than what this might be. That was two hundred and forty dollars a foot for us to, to realign that road and build a brand-new road. So mind you, you're a lot closer to town, you're a lot closer to surfacing, you're a lot closer to everything here, so you don't have the, the time traveling there and, and back. So my guess is this one's probably between thirty and a hundred dollars a foot, depending on what kind of servicing and, and who you get to do it. So seven hundred and forty-five dollars a foot, or at a hundred dollars a foot, I mean, that's, that's gonna be quite a bit of money to, for the county to even go in there and upgrade it. So even at thirty bucks a foot after they get this built, so.
Okay. One of the things I left out is, another option is, this could be continued until you bring back the draft, do the research gets done.
See if he agrees.
And see if the, the applicants agree.
Sounds like we can hear him now.
Brian, can you hear us now?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm working off of my phone. Um, yeah, as, as far as the road, we're, we're willing to do the twenty feet, but as you said, I mean, most of the road was not done to that standard before, and I've invested, you know, in my property, put a well in, et cetera, and twenty feet is going to cost me quite a bit extra, and I will be a taxpayer also. Um, in terms of selling the property and profit, whoever, my son is occupying half of the property and we and my wife are occupying the other half of the property, so it's both of us sharing this burden of building the road. And obviously, if I can't build a route, I can't get a building permit and I can't build my house.
Okay, Brian, point well taken, and I think this commission understands that part of it. What, part of the discussion that they've had is making it a no maintenance road, which would mean you'd be responsible for that and pay for the signage. That's been the discussion a little bit already, are you okay with that? And if you are, would you be okay with continuing it till that was brought forward from the highway department?
I think you would have to make the motion on the stipulations and just add that as a stipulation, we'll bring that back.
I guess, I guess we could add those as stipulations and have them bring back that understanding if you're okay with that. Go ahead, Brian.
Yes, yes, I am okay with that. I mean, my understanding was, we had to maintain the road anyway, because it's not, that's what we were told previously, cause it's, it's not currently an active county-maintained road, and that would go for the other individuals that are on the road as well.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So Joe, I would ask for a little bit of your assistance on a possible motion for this.
So I think, uh, basically the motion would be, uh, you, the board recommends, or so, the motion would be to approve ER twenty twenty-three dash zero one dash eighteen twenty-three dash one, uh, with the following stipulations. Road width be no less than twenty feet with six inches of gravel servicing, ditches be built to ordinance fourteen specification regardless of the road width, the size and location of the cross culverts will be approved by the highway department, and the fourth stipulation would be that the highway department bring back a resolution designating one fifty-third as a no maintenance road.
There we go. Moved by Hickok, seconded by Laster. Any public comment on that? Anything from you, Brian, you okay with that motion?
Yes, I am.
So this would be for E, correct?
This is for item E. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we go to G.
So the next one, so this is, is kind of a, a little bit of a different scenario, but the same scenario also. This is a brand-new section line, he's going to be the first one to put gravel on this section line, so if you're wanting to, to start fresh, and this one is, it's a mile away from one fifty-fourth, there's quite a bit of developable property there, um, just to the east, so I, I, you, the, the commission could also, um, stick to their guns on this one and, and require it to be built to ordinance fourteen with a twenty-four-foot road top.
Okay, let me clarify this, if I could. This is a whole new section line, and then it's gonna turn off with another access to the other property with the turnaround that they're gonna be put onto that, but you're saying this could continue forward?
All, for a mile over to one fifty-fourth, which is a, a very highly-traveled road.
And what road width is one fifty-fourth?
Uh, it's twenty-four, twenty-six, and that is a county-maintained road.
County-maintained road.
Oh, chair.
And two thirty-second, I think, all the way to the east is also a county-maintained road. If you go over to the east here, it's quite a ways away, but the county does maintain that one also.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize him as Hickok.
So how far is he putting on that section line?
Uh, I believe he wanted to do seven hundred and twenty feet on the east-west section line, so roughly half of his lot.
Okay. So, just so Mr. Brian Duchaine understands that.
Mr. Chair.
How much that road is? Seven hundred and twenty feet for half of his lot for twenty-four feet.
Brian, I think, uh, a question was being asked of you.
Yes, yes, I, I understand what you're talking about. And, and again, I, I don't have much choice, I would build the twenty-four-foot road as opposed to not being able to build a road.
Okay, cause quite frankly, Mr. Brian, I don't, Deb, do you have a follow-up?
No, you're good, you can explain.
That's where I'm going with this, is I think this one needs to be the twenty-fourth. But, um, I got Mr. Laster in line.
So what is gonna be the requirement, recommended requirement for that seven hundred and whatever feet, what is it gonna be?
Twenty-four foot, follow ordinance fourteen.
Now, are we gonna maintain that little section of it then, or, cause if they're gonna put it to?
Well, currently it would only serve one house, so it would be a no maintenance.
Okay, because it's, okay, because of that, those criteria, okay, I just wanna make sure.
So, yeah, for right now, it would be a no maintenance, but in the future, if there's future development there, we certainly, I mean, the commission could at that time, um, choose to maintain it.
Mr. Chair.
Are you done, Travis?
Yes.
So Joe, we talked about going south off of Longview, we got twenty feet, then it goes to sixteen feet, then it's gonna go to twenty feet. If that sixteen-foot's gotta be widened in the future, who's gonna do that? The adjacent property owner?
Well, if it's a no maintenance, if it's a no maintenance road, it would be the, the property owners.
Okay.
Okay, I, right now, Brad, did you have, I think I let you talk, um.
Right.
On my, Brian, um, before us, we have possibility, two motions, and one would be to move to deny, which is a recommendation from staff, and that they build it to, uh, ordinance fourteen standards, or you can, uh, second motion would be to move to approve an exception with the three conditions, that would be typically what, uh, we just done.
With the addition of the fourth.
With the addition of the fourth, but I, my two cents in on this one here is, is I, I'm agreeing with staff with this one, cause, just because it's gonna go all the way over and I think it's approved. So that's where I'm, I'm at, but we have no motion on the floor right now.
So, chairman.
Mr. Hickok.
So G, if we approve it, needs to have road width at twenty-four foot?
So if you would like it built to ordinance fourteen, you need to deny.
If we wanna do it to ordinance fourteen?
Yeah, you need to move to deny the exception request.
Okay, but, okay, but we can't just say on the exception request, because it is, is the exception, that we just wanna do it pending county ordinance fourteen?
You would need to deny the exception request, and then it will need to be built to ordinance fourteen. So they're asking for an exception to ordinance fourteen.
Okay, thank you. I got it, thank you.
There's, any further comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to move to deny the exception request ER oh-one dash eighteen twenty-three dash two, as there is no practicality typically preventing stripped application ordinance fourteen standard.
Second.
So I have a motion by the primary section, but Laster, do we have any discussion on this motion? Mr. Duchaine, do you have any comment on the motion?
Um, no, that, that will work out, cause I do also have the ability and option to do the easement up to my son's property and build the road to access that property on the property, or build to ordinance fourteen on that north-south section, I'm sorry, east-west section.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, with any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor with the motion on the floor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This was for item G.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Brian. Next we come on to item, are we on H, or did we skip one? Okay.
H.
One second. Afternoon, commissioners, Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director, Agenda Item H is Planned Unit Development Overlay twenty-two dash seventeen, to allow planned unit development overlay for a mixed-use structure, a mobile home park, and a multiple-family dwelling. The applicant is Rapid Creek West LLC, the agent is David Allard. Location of the property is one-two-three-five-zero, West Highway forty-four. It is three-point-one-one acres, currently zoned, commercial district, there is a mobile home park that exists on the lot now, accesses South Highway forty-four, and there is special flood hazard area to include floodway on the property. So the zoning ordinance, section two sixteen, lists the following standards that shall be applied in a PUD overlay district. I'll start with, uh, number one, with staff's responses, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in a commercial zoning district. Number two, yes, the mobile home park and stick-built structure have been on the prob, on the subject property since the early nineteen seventies. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon the surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet pending county zoning ordinances, ordinance sections three oh-three, three oh-four, and three oh-five, which govern mobile homes, mobile home parks, and multiple-family dwellings. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is three-point-one-one acres. Number five, yes, the subject property is owned by Rapid Creek West LLC, the business is listed as managed or managed, is, and is in good standing, according to the South Dakota Secretary of State. The applicant, David Allard, is listed as the agent. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven refers us to the next table under section five-ten, it lists seven criteria, the planning commission or the board may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. I'll start reading staff's responses with number one. No, the uses of the PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, the mobile home park and stick-built structure, again, have been on the property since the nineteen seventies. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of the other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, no, the uses requested are residential in nature and should not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet pending county zoning ordinance sections three oh-three and three oh-five, which govern mobile home parks and multiple-family dwellings. And I have included details of the onsite wastewater treatment system in my analysis, which I'll get to in a little bit. Uh, number five, yes, no changes are being proposed for the existing ingress and egress to West Highway forty-four. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district appear to meet pending county zoning ordinance sections two-eleven, two-sixteen, three oh-three, three oh-four, and three oh-five. And lastly, number seven, the future land use designation is commercial, the requested uses are consistent with the county's comprehensive, plan viewed to twenty forty with this approved PUD overlay. Some property history, there are seven mobile homes in the mobile home park, all of them have carports, uh, most of them have sheds, they are all permitted to be on that property. Lot seven contains the mixed-use structure, which you see here in the photo, it contains a fourteen-by-seventy-five-foot single-wide mobile home, an attached garage with living quarters and a commercial office, as well as a decked edition, two sheds, and a carport. There's an onsite, onsite wastewater treatment system for the mobile home park, uh, there are three current operating permits for that system. There is a floodplain development on, permit on the property to place three sheds, and there is a current county ordinance violation for structures and valid building permits. Request must now for interdepartmental review, emergency services, and the county addressing coordinator had concerns about the, that are addressed as conditions of approval. County ordinance enforcement stated that approval of this request should clear the violations on the property, no other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the existing mobile home park and stick-built structure have been on the subject property since the early seventies and have been operated under conditional use permit seventy-one oh-four. That permit has been under review for revocation since October of twenty-twenty-two due to multiple conditions of approval not being met. Staff has worked pretty closely with the applicant to bring the mobile home park into compliance, but discovered additional uses were either existing or being proposed on the subject property that would require multiple conditional use permits. Uh, December last year, the applicant applied for this request to bring the property into compliance. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use structure that will consist of a mobile home attached to a stick-built structure. The stick-built structure will include a residential dwelling, a garage, uh, mobile home park manager office. Currently, the mobile home on lot seven connects to the stick-built structure via an open walkway, but the applicant plans to remove and permanently partition that off, and you can see that in this picture here, so. Picture on the left is viewing it from the stick-built structure into the mobile home, uh, picture on the right is from the mobile home to the stick-built structure, but again, he plans to permanently, uh, partition that off and rent both units separately.
Okay.
Uh, the mobile home park manager office, which is in this picture, is a use by right in a commercial zoning district. The applicant will need to apply for a building permit for the recently added finished space in the mixed-use structure and pay any associated penalty fees, and this will review, remove the ordinance violation. So you can see here, he finished this hallway, uh, he did add that office, uh, there is a bedroom in here as well, uh, and again, you can see the windows that were added without a building permit. The applicant is also proposing to convert one of the single-wide mobile homes into a multiple-family dwelling and rent them as two separate units. There are seven carports on the property, they are all one hundred and forty-four square feet and not anchored to the ground, but they are sufficiently weighted to prevent them from tipping over, therefore, no building permits are required for these structures. In December of last year, South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources permitted the continued use of the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. Based on this approval and the administrative rules of South Dakota, staff calculates the applicant, they have up to twenty-four people utilizing the system in total, and this is included as a condition of approval. Details of the system cannot be verified, so the state and county approval will be required if any changes are made to the existing system, if the system causes groundwater pollution, or if the wa, wastewater from the system surfaces, and this is also included as a condition of approval. And the planning department is unaware of any problems with the existing onsite wastewater treatment system, as it appears to be adequate for the proposed uses. All that to say, staff recommends approval of planned unit development overlay twenty-two dash seventeen with conditions.
Thank you, Jason, and, and this will, yeah, fix all the problems, all, you guys have worked through everything with them?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was concerned with.
Okay.
Ms. Hickok.
Just a question, so you have a total of twenty-four people, I'm not against this, Mr. Allard, I was at your planning commission meeting, um, as the representative from the commission, but the question I have is, so you put it in a PUD, are these properties subject to VHR rules, once they're in PUDs?
VHRs are not part of this request, he could use vacation home rentals in a commercial district as a use by right.
Okay, so he can?
Right.
On a PUD, or because it's commercial?
It's commercial.
So if you're a PUD, can you use, do you have to go through VHR rules?
They would still apply, yes. He could have those as a use by right, but section three-nineteen would still apply to those rentals.
So every one that he decides to put as a VHR vacation home rental would go under the VHR state rules at this point, even with a PUD?
Yes.
And he would have enough lot size and stuff to be able to do our rules and, and be able to still do the PUD with VHRs?
I believe so, but he has not indicated to me that he wants to use vacation rentals.
I guess I was just wondering that, just by, you have a bunch of rules and regulations coming for him, VHRs, and I didn't know if all these PUDs that we had would be affected and how they'd be affected with VHRs?
Right.
For the future, or they grandfathered in because they're PUDs?
Yep, so this is, this request is specific for the PUD overlay to allow the uses that I discussed?
Right.
In this request, so the other underlying zoning district, which is commercial, would allow him to have vacation home rentals.
No matter?
If he were to have some of those on there, then he would still, um, he would still have to follow section three-nineteen for vacation home rentals, and he'd have to meet all the state requirements.
And he'd still have to get a CUP, no?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Move to approve planned unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash seventeen, sixteen conditions.
We have motion?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Hickok? Any public discussion? Seeing none, any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries for item H. Item aye. Item I.
Agenda item I is rezone 22-31 to rezone 13.55 acres from agriculture district to rancher district. The applicant is Argyle Properties LLC. Anita Lee is the agent, along with Jim Peterson. Location of the property is 23911 Hidden Valley Trail. Again, it is 13.55 acres, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail. And there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So in order to the other requests, we do take into account current zoning within one half mile of the property. You'll see open space and dark green agriculture and light green, rural residential in yellow and suburban residential district in brown. Future land use is identified on the map on the screen. Open space and dark green, ranchette in tan, rural residential in yellow, and suburban residential in brown. Hidden Valley Trail is a collector. It is 16-foot wide gravel road and a 40-foot wide private access easement. Private water and sewer is the norm for this neighborhood. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Hidden Valley Road District stated that at this time, we are asking to see new layout packet so we can make an informed decision regarding this request. We are still very concerned about the fire danger and water situation. Gail Schmidt, Fire Chief Rockerville Fire Department, has expressed her concerns to Cody Sack in a phone message, as well in an email. Those concerns have not changed since our last meeting. There were no other objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant originally proposed to subdivide the property into three lots under layout plan 22-53. Condition number six of that approval stated that prior to filing the MIR with the register of needs, the applicant obtains an approved rezoning plan amendment. December 6 of 2022, the Board of Adjustment denied without prejudice comprehensive plan amendment 22-21 to change future land use from agriculture to rural residential district and rezone 22-28 to rezone the subject property from agriculture to rural residential district. The applicants have since submitted a new layout plan to subdivide the property into two lots instead of three. Rezoning the subject property to rancher would allow the applicants to subdivide the property into two separate lots. The future land use of the subject property is ranchette and rural residential. Therefore, the comprehensive plan amendment is not required. Staff finds no significant issues with the request as it appears to be in harmony with existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads, infrastructure, and the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan View to 2040. And with that, staff recommends approval of rezone 22-31.
Thank you, Jason. And I do have some speaker request forms on this. Is the applicant here? Okay, I'm going to let the speaker request come up, and then I'll let you address what you hear, and then address the commission. So speaker request I have is Darcy Gunderson. This is in regards to item I, the rezon.
My name is Darcy Gunderson. I live at 23896 Hidden Valley Trail. As previously stated at the prior county commissioner meeting held on December 6, 2022, and at the planning commission meeting held on November 14, 2022, and the last planning commission meeting that we had, I'm sorry, I don't have the date on that, there are several reasons not to rezon this agricultural property. Although not all properties are zoned agriculture, we are a tight-knit agriculture community, and nothing has changed since the prior meeting where you denied rezoning due to the lack of issues of water and one single-lane road in and out of our community. The road is a single-lane road with limited maintenance due to limited funds received to maintain it and plow snow. If rezoning is permitted and another home is built on the lot, the additional funds received through taxes will not even be close to account for the additional usage caused by the increased traffic, wear and tear on the road for the current vacation rental and the additional structure, be it another vacation rental or... excuse me. I'm sorry, I went off here. If rezoning is permitted and another home is built on the lot, the additional funds received through taxes will not come close to the additional funds needed to for the increased traffic, wear and tear on the road and that rental. Also, new utilities will have to be put in place, which will require excavation along the roadway, creating congestion and more damage to that road. Another issue with a single-lane road is that it is the only road in and out of our community. In the event of a fire, this could be quite problematic, possibly deadly, if individuals that live towards the end of the road cannot get out. Also, passing on the road can be quite trying at times, especially with recent snowfall. The side of the road drops off in several places, and you can easily get stuck if you're not careful. Added traffic and delivery vehicles only add to this issue. All of us that live in this community, except Mrs. Lee, have our entire lives in our homes. If fire breaks out, we will lose everything, not just the structures. Mrs. Lee has no personal items in the home and has no emotional tie to the property or the community, unlike the rest of us that have a very personal stake in this. Water is a big reason for not granting rezoning in this area. We are currently in a drought and water tables are very low. At a minimum, two families in the area have to haul water to meet their basic water needs, and this includes my property, which is directly across the road from the subject property. If rezoning is permitted, this allows the owner to break the property into another lot, which could either add another vacation rental property or allow her to sale the land so someone else can build another home and dig another well and septic tank. This will increase the use of water that is already limited in this area. We are currently dealing with this now. The property next to mine, to the west, where we share a fence line, was approved to be rezoned a few years ago. The 10-acre lot at 13531 Neckyoke Road was divided into two 5-acre lots. The owner sold the five acres with the house on it and plans on building another home, which has not happened yet, but would add another well and septic system. Also, the property right across the street from this property on Neckyoke Road, which is 13452 Neckyoke Road, was approved rezoning about the same time. That property was subdivided, and the owner sold that lot, and the new owners are currently building a home, which an additional well and septic system are now in place and tapped into our water system. This has slowed down the wells' rate of return even more in this area. This has happened all within short distance from all of us in the community. After talking with the Water Reclamation Office in the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources about wells and water usage in our area, they advised that it does make a difference about the number of wells in an area and the water usage in a community. They have been monitoring the water tables, and we are in a drought and water tables are currently low. This summer is predicted to be hotter and drier than normal. So basically, we will keep taking from the water we have available with little or no water to replenish our water tables. We are eventually going to run out. In addition, wells can only be monitored by their owners, and there is no requirement to report the flow other than when they are first drilled. And then the drilling contractor must report the depth of the well and the rate at which the water is flowing. This is the one and only time this information is verified. Therefore, it is unknown what the rate of flow is for any of the wells in this area without contacting each owner directly to see if they have recently monitored the rate their wells are flowing. The information about the depth and the rate of flow can be obtained from the state of South Dakota and has been presented by Jim Peterson at the previous meeting. However, it is not accurate for how the wells are currently flowing, and the only information that is accurate is the depth of wells, which vary widely in this area. I know my rate of water flow is less than when we first had it drilled because of the fact that we now have to haul water. So with adding these additional wells and the current drought, a hardship is being created for all of us in our community. And if another well is drilled on the subject property, this current hardship only worsens. My question to you is, when does this stop? I can understand not wanting to tell someone what to do with their property and denying them from splitting it up, but this is a unique situation. The owner does not, nor has she ever lived in this community. She has been less than forthcoming since she purchased the property only months ago. She originally stated she would be moving to our community, but never had any intention of doing so. This is evident from the swiftness of requesting rezoning and a conditional use permit for this property just shortly after she purchased the property. She is only in this for the money. She purchased this property well over market value with every intention of breaking it up and selling the lots. Mrs. Lee is an absentee owner and has no interest in our community or the people that live here. This is evident from a couple of situations that have recently happened. Mrs. Lee had a contractor doing some work inside and outside of her property. The contractor took it upon himself to trespass and dump his waste, not once, but twice, into the neighbor's dumpster. I happened to be outside at the time and personally witnessed this. The neighbor had to call her manager and complain. There was no one around, and the contractor did basically whatever he wanted to. Her manager eventually came out and removed some of the items from the dumpster, but if she hadn't have called that manager, nothing would have been done. Secondly, another contractor took his large loader and parked it on private property without the owner's permission, without any thought of damaging their property whatsoever. And again, Mrs. Lee was not around. Bottom line is that if she would have done her research, she would have been made aware of the type of community we are and that none of us wants, let alone a vacation rental, but we are against her breaking it up and either selling the property or adding another vacation rental. In closing, everyone that physically lives along Hidden Valley Trail and members of the Road District, except Mrs. Lee, who does not physically live here, are against the rezoning. Other property owners, Bobby and Nathan Einem, who live directly behind the property in question, are against this rezoning, along with the property owners, Marvin Laurie Larrabee to the west, whose property actually allows us access to Hidden Valley Trail. And by the way, they occasionally do have to haul water to their property. Therefore, my hope is that you vote with the majority of your constituents and deny the rezoning request.
Thank you, Darcy. Now, Darcy, you attended the planning commissions and every meetings since this has come up forth. So I just wanted to point out that I think we gave you about nine minutes. And that your voice has been heard, planning commissioner and so forth. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because normally, you know, the commission could give three minutes conversation, but we let you go on.
I get that, thank you.
So just to let you know that you've been heard.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Did I hear you say that she purchased the property over market value? You got evidence of that?
I'm sorry?
Do you have some evidence?
We have submitted that, that showed what property values were in that area. And then I believe that was previously, I don't have that with me today, but it shows that it was...
I mean, was there a formal appraisal done on the property?
I have no idea. I don't know that.
Because some of this, what you said, I think is factual, but I think some of it's also hearsay.
Sure.
That you, you know, I'd have to see more evidence to prove some of this stuff. And going back, when they wanted to do the three lots, you know, I don't think there's one of us up here that thought that was a good idea. But, you know, I thought doing the two lots or a rezon was a compromise. And if we go the route with two lots, I would not be for a vacation home rental on that second lot. I mean, I'm just one of four, five commissioners, but that would be my stance. So that's all I got.
Okay, is there any questions for Darcy from the rest of the commission? Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Michelle. I'll kill that last name. So I'll wait for you to give me an answer on that.
My name is Michelle Nalene Marwani.
One more time.
Nalene Marwani.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. Greetings again. My name is Michelle. I live at 23921 Hidden Valley Trail, the property that is to the direct south of the proposed development. We have all been here over and over again. I feel like I know you and your personalities, and you've heard the united opposition from each member of the Hidden Valley Road District, with the obvious exception of the developer. We have unanimously voiced our concerns regarding the repeated attempts to develop solely-for-profit a piece of agricultural property into a for-profit, non-owner-occupied development property. We have valid concerns about water supply, about fire, about the road, and the increased transient inhabitants and the traffic, et cetera, from the developer that she has for a well-established, largely agricultural neighborhood. The developer's plans, as Darcy just mentioned, have reportedly changed many times, from living on site to subdividing and building two more vacation homes, subdividing and selling the lots. At one point, there was even an offer to build a hog farm if she didn't get her way in front of the commission. What has not changed is the lack of planning. The garage built to or on the section line out of compliance in what even the most novice developer should have been on the lookout for, the lack of foresight in making an offer contingent on approval of development and subdividing plans, and the utter disrespect for an established agricultural neighborhood and its inhabitants. It feels as if a for-profit developer is bullying her way into the neighborhood with no regard for how her actions impact those of us who actually live there. Just like Mrs. Hancock said this morning, as a developer, you do the work before you buy. There was no work done before this was purchased by what we have seen. I am a geography teacher, so I made you a map because I don't think that when we tell you about who's hauling water and who's out of water, it is very clear. So can I offer that too?
You can give them to us, Michelle, but the commission's made decisions that all paperwork needs to be in 24 hours before to consider. But, I mean, you can definitely hand it up. It's just pictures, right? I just wanted to clarify for anybody that brings anything else forward.
So I teach my geography students using GIS, and maps tell stories. So here's the story that the map tells, or what I would refer to as cause to reject the developer's plans. The star on the map indicates the developer's short-term vacation rental that required a variance as it's built to the section line. Number one on the map indicates the neighbor just 90 feet away from the developer's vacation rental that had to have a well dug deeper as it was not sufficient for two people. Number two on the map indicates the house across the road from the developers that also had to have their well dug deeper. Number three, they are hauling water, and it's still not enough for just two people and hobby farming animals. Number four on the map is a well that was dug and came up dry. Number five is hauling water for livestock. Number six had to have their well dug deeper as it too was going dry. The proposed five acres sits right in the middle of all of this, literally a stone's throw from the planned development and the plan to obviously drill one more well. We've lived in this neighborhood since the early 90s. We lived here during the Battle Creek fire and lost all of our equipment and hay. We watched the neighbor's house, number six on that map, burn down because the Rockerville Fire Department could not get water to save the house, and they did have their trucks in our pasture, the fire chief stated, and we see that that is in the packet and compelling, obviously. They couldn't get water to the fire. We are not a neighborhood that is prepared for development. We are the ones that have to live with this decision, not the commission, not the developer. The consequences of this decision threaten our very way of life. The existing land use is agricultural, and horses have been on the property under the ownership of the developer. The only suburban residential zoning in our neighborhood was originally plotted for the sole use as a well lot with no home allowed, but that too made it through to the commission and the planning department against what was originally proposed and approved by the planning department years ago. So again, when does it stop? When do we stop breaking the rules? Now down to the science of the matter. According to the USGS report specific to the Black Hills, population growth, resource development, and periodic droughts have the potential to affect the quantity, quality, and availability of water within the Black Hills area. Additionally, another USGS report has to be noted. Water levels, and these are specific to the Black Hills, water levels can be affected by several factors, including pumping of nearby wells and climatic conditions. Long-term water level declines could have various effects, including changes in groundwater flow patterns, reduction in spring flow, increased pumping costs, and dry wells. Going on, the same report says, however, dry wells or reduced pumping capacity could result during periods of declining water levels. That's where we are. That is our reality. Over the past few months, we've been told repeatedly by the developer's representatives that our fears about water shortages and wells going dry are baseless and our fears are imagined. We know when listening to experts on this matter instead of real estate agents or finance managers, in this case, the exact opposite is true. This is not an imagined fear. Please look at the science, not solely-for-profit testimony. Please listen to the pleadings of the community under threat. Hidden Valley Trail is agricultural, with the exception of what has already been snuck in. No one tricked the developer into this. We're not ganging up on her. We're not ganging up on her. As has been the accusation, we're not, we're defending our way of life from profit, non-owner-occupied development. This is not someone's grandma who wants to split her land to give to the grandkids. This is to make money at our expense. With due diligence, this all could have been handled appropriately before purchasing egg lands solely for non-owner-occupied profit. Res zoning this egg land for additional development threatens our future in our home where we have lived for more than 30 years. Again, I ask you for your attention to your comprehensive plan. This is your stated purpose. LUH 3.2, the county should provide for stable neighborhoods by minimizing adverse effects from conflicting land uses. This wasn't a secret when she bought. Please do what you say you, you will do. We respectfully ask that you keep your word. We ask that you minimize the adverse effects from conflicting land uses based on all of the information. This is solely for profit. This is not out of necessity. It's your legacy as public servants. Long after you're no longer serving in your current capacity, we get to deal with the consequences of this decision. In the certified letter we received about this matter, it states, only any person interested may appear and show cause if there be any, why such request should not be granted. We have demonstrated unanimously as a road district and beyond, every property that touches this property is in opposition to this plan. Please respect our established neighborhood. You've given the developer so much already. You have already altered the makeup of our neighborhood. Please, how much more can you give? Are you willing to give the developer for profit at our expense?
Thank you, Michelle. And again, I just want to make aware, it's been 10 minutes. So we've given you guys the time.
Thank you.
Do you have any final comments?
I do not.
Okay. And again, you've been to the planning commission and voiced your concerns, both of you guys. And we've gotten in our packet the emails that we reviewed too. So I just wanted to clarify that we got those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I do have Judy Mildred. I need you to come up.
Can I speak last?
You're the last one.
I'm the after ten.
Um, I'm taking all comments now. We, we just was taking, that's how I started, that's how I'm going to finish it.
Okay, great. I'm Judy Mildred. I'm Secretary Treasurer for the Hidden Valley Trail Road District. And I did send all my stuff in the packet except for one map, and if you don't want me to show that, I certainly won't. On page 219 and 220 are invoices that we spent the money on the road. Page 220 is showing what we spent in May, which was $3,020. And all of that was spent for milling on the 16-foot portion of the entrance. And we try to do that. All of it is, is in front of the new property and the Morton Building, because that's where everybody drives and we try to make that as good as we can. Our allotment is on page 221. You'll see that we got our maximum allotment is scheduled for 3543. So we spent almost our whole amount of money on the road. So that is one of our concerns, is maintaining the road with more traffic. And I think it was mentioned several times, some of the things I was going to share have already been mentioned, so I won't belabor that point. Fire is a great concern. On page 222 in the packet, 224 and 225 are emails between the fire chief and Cody. And then Cody got me thinking because he sent one to the fire chief asking about the house that was burned and he had some, wanted to know about the history. And she gave a very good summary. I have it, I can read it, or I don't know if you've had a chance to read it for the, for the packet.
It's been in our packet, so.
It's in the packet, yep. It is in the packet. Okay. Water is a real concern. And after reading the packet this weekend, so I couldn't submit this in time, I had to submit everything last Tuesday, but I did some research and I think I have an answer of why we have water shortages. I talked to Joanne Neuss, who is a geologist and a hydrologist with South Dakota Geological Survey, and she sent me a map. And I'd love to share that, but if you don't want me to, if that's against the rules, I don't want to break the rules. But she explained that all of our area, and I'm not a geologist, so bear with me, is on fractured rock. We do not have any major aquifers. Most of it is pre-Cambrian age fractured rock, overlaying pre-Cambrian or Cambrian age deadwood formation. And the reason that we are so concerned is that all of it is, in our area, there are no pockets or shallow alluvium or terrace deposits. And the what are there are very limited. Those are the things that hold the water. So basically, our water comes from surface water, and they do consider some of these alluviums minor aquifers. But in years, let me read what she said. I actually have an email from her as well, but again, I didn't get it in time to put it in the packet. Surface allium and terrace deposits, in wet years, deposits may contribute to groundwater found in underlying pre-Cambrian age fractured rock. And then she told me that you can drill up to 500 feet and you may or may not reach water in fractured rock. As I mentioned, infraction, fractured pre-Cambrian age rocks are not consistent. It just depends on whether you dwell, dwell, drill, excuse me, I'm so nervous, through a fractured rock that may have water. So water is indeed a big concern. In, on page 223, you'll have a copy of email from the Forest Service. We are indeed an agriculture area. We have horses, goats, pigs, chickens, some of us have cattle. I love to do bottle cows in the spring. And you'll see that that, that that is confirmed in the fact that we are in the Rockerville allotment. We are actually considered open range, and it's not uncommon for us to wake up and have a cow calf in our yard, because we're considered open range. And we are surrounded by pastures. We are surrounded on the east side by the upper Dedman pasture, and it's in that allotment grazing. We, on the south side, it's Foster, and we have four cattle guards, Kiefer and Hutterstrow all have cattle. So we are just asking for your consideration. And I, I agree, I wish that Jim and Anita had done their research. They would have found out that we really are an area that loves our zoning and needs our zoning. Lastly, I just want to address the future land use. I have to say, none of us, none of us were aware that the zoning for our area would change or could possibly change by the future land use. So we learned a lot, and I appreciate that. I asked a couple of the staff, what is exactly is future land use? And they explained it as what could happen or expansion possibilities. And that makes sense to me. I understand that. But then I wonder, where do people like us go to find land? If we have horses, it takes two and a half acres per horse to sustain. So on a five acre, you, we could only have five horses. Now, I understand our property is our property, but I also am surprised by how the future land use is the justification, or it appears to be the justification, of the proposed rezoning decision today. But it's, it's today, it's not future. The future is here, I guess. We have worked hard to build what we have, and I guess we're just asking that you would reconsider or consider. And if you want me to leave the map showing all this pre-Cambrian stuff, and she put a star around, Joyce did.
Judy, you can most definitely hand it out, but rule is.
I know, I know. I didn't get it till after.
It makes sense, because we have, you know, if you see our paperwork.
I know. The packet was huge. Thank you, by the way, for all you do and for listening to us. And, you know, some of us are pretty emotional about this. We, we do care, and it's nothing against the new owner. We just wish she would have done some research and figured out that we are indeed agriculture. We are very worried about the road. Our road is, is a self-maintained road because of the road district. It's 16-foot at the beginning, but it's only 12 feet. Shortly after her property, it already narrows, and it's only 12 feet where the proposed acre, new, new zoning, if you, if you approve that. It's only about 12 feet there. So it is a concern if there was a fire that we could all get out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Does the commissioners have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
One of the well dibs, because, you know, over by Rockerville, they're running into the same thing. I think a lot of their problem is because anything less than 100 feet is called a shallow well. And, you know, they might only get a half gallon a minute. And with that being said, then they, they have a concrete cistern and fill that up during the night when they got that half gallon. So they got a, a two or 3,000 gallon reservoir that they can fall back on.
Right.
And, but I wondered what happened if you went three or four or 500 feet deep? Even if you hit water at 50 feet, that other 400 feet's gonna, if you take a six-inch pipe and go three or 400 feet, you're gonna have a, a large volume of water down there too. So I just wondered how deep the wells are out there. Got any information on that?
Apparently, they vary greatly. I did not have her look up all the well logs, and Darcy's right, the well log is when it was dug. It's not indicative of our current water skip table. She said they, that they went down for, I had Darcy's permission to, to get on her property information because, you know, we, that's so close to the proposed change. Their well log shows 12 feet of deadwood formation overlying the pre-Cambrian aged rocks, sorry. The log also shows that fewer zones where water was encountered in the fractional rock. So I don't know that I wrote down how deep her well was. I know ours is pretty deep, 249 feet or something like that.
So over the years, I've drilled three wells, and, you know, they're not created equal. They're in fractions or fissions like yours. And, and one 60 gallons a minute and one's seven gallons a minute, so.
750 feet deep? Wow.
You know, it's kind of hit and miss when you're endless fractions. If a person did build a house and they didn't have sufficient water, then would a concrete cistern and then get water from frontier western where they deliver that water? Would that be an alternative if that ever became an issue?
You know, I appreciate your comment, Ron, I do, or Mr. Ron Kness, Roskin. I guess, in all honesty, our, our wells are, were dug, and I know that Darcy specifically has a cistern. And I don't know if she can afford to pay. You know, I don't think that's a fair question to ask me because I can't speak to people's financial status and whether they can afford. We thought about a cistern, but until we found out how expensive it would be to get through all the rock. We are up, up, up the hill ways, and it is on the rock, and it would have been very expensive to build a cistern.
I'm not suggesting you and the neighbors have a cistern. I'm suggesting the, somebody that got subdivided into two lots and somebody wanted to build a house and say, look, and I'm not going to drill a well. I'm just gonna buy my water and not bother.
That would be great.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to think outside the box here, that's all.
That would help. I understand. I misunderstood.
Ms. Hancock.
So ma'am, this, this is a reason, so when they do the road or they do the water, they have to follow stipulations in order to do that through the state, let alone through the county on their roads. So today is a rezon for this. It's not a layout plot or anything, it's just a rezon. So all those stipulations will come later, based on if she has enough water, she'll figure it out and, and if the road's going to meet the standards and work, or she has to make a bigger road or a 16-foot road that, that comes with the other layout plot. So today is just the rezon of the property.
Okay. But if I understood what the geologist said, in wet years, we would not probably have a problem, but in dry years, that alluvium and terrace deposits get dry. So for fire and, and everything else, we, I'm just sharing, we really are concerned.
You're, you're okay, but that happens all over the Black Hills. That happens even in the Pactola area in dry years or wet years, just depending on what happens. So all over, probably western South Dakota, you're either hauling if it's, if it's dry years and if wet, wet years, you're good. I think that's just kind of the thing that happens in the Black Hills. We have water restrictions for that reason as well in Rapid City when you have wet years and dry wells. So you have a lot of that in, in different areas besides just yours. And for splitting the lots or adverse effects to that, I'm finding that people say that in many areas, maybe not you personally, but then their family comes in or somebody else, that they do the same thing, but that's different to the lady because she's, she's selling it for profit. So then all the wells and all the, the road and everything is just fine because you're just adding family. So I'm finding a lot of adverse effects are being made exceptions to, depending on who the person is. So for me, it's, it's the same as if you're splitting a lot for your son or somebody else and this lady's doing it because she's bought the lot and splitting it to make it into something for two other people.
Sure. And I would agree to that, except for the exception that all of us have some kind of livestock and we actually need all our wells, our, all our land for that, for that purpose. So if we, we would probably try to help a son buy a lot somewhere else. I don't, I can honestly say that we are all really cowgirls, cowboys, and we, we really do need, need our land. The other thing is, I'm, I'm sure you hear that a lot, but for us, the fire danger is, is a real concern. We watched the neighbor's house burn down. Gail addressed it in the email. It's in that packet. She talked about what happened, you know, the narrow road, not able to get to it. There, there's one way in and out. Our road actually ends in Christina's driveway or in her yard. And beyond that is Forest Service, and that's all fenced off, and there's no way to get out on the other end. So that is a concern, especially with all of us trying to load up our animals and get out of there, so.
And we talked about that also today, about making roads that shouldn't be in county standards, because people didn't want, because they were just ranchers or farmers, that they just wanted the 16-foot exception. People just needed it for one lot. If you look at the future land use, this area is turning all yellow. So a bunch of the ag producers or ag people have sold off their lots into supposedly not wanting the other people to come in for profit. So for me, to be fair, today is, is a rezon. She has to make sure for water, just like you do sewer, septic, and roads, that those conditions are met. If she's building into a 16-foot road, I don't think that started with her, that started with the landowners around it that thought, that, thought that at the time was a safety factor. So if she needs to make a 16-foot road on these two lots, that comes later. Meaning, those concerns are good concerns, same with water.
Gotcha.
But those are the same concerns about a lot of people that are hauling in that area right now, that have lived there many years, including some ranchers and farmers, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm listening to what you're saying, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, Judy. And I do, I just want to express to the, to the neighbor that we gave over almost an hour now to just you guys, for you to listen to your concerns. And I just want to express that because it's, we've taken the time to do that.
All right. Thank you for your indulgence. I know you've been here since nine, so thank you.
Yeah, but I just wanted to thank you that, that we've heard your compassion, we hear that your compassion and your concerns and, and they're not going on deaf here or so on.
Thank you.
And thanks for sit through our whole meeting today. So with that, I'm going to go to the applicant.
Jason, can I have you come up? Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for time. While there's multiple things to address here, I'll try to keep it limited. Could you put the zoning map on? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll start with the road district. Um, I, I did also read in your packet where, uh, it talked about that they have, uh, assessed themselves and this year it's thirty-four hundred and some change, uh, for the road district. When you form a road district, um, at the formation of the road district, you assess your, you assess it. And I think you guys probably notice maybe more for the audience. And then thereafter, each year, you can increase that road district by CPI, state CPI or, and, and, uh, new growth. And that, that, you know, three, four, whatever that might be. But, so that's sort of how that, you know, there's sort of a tax freeze and it can only grow so much unless, like any other district, you opt out. And so you could opt out and say, hey, you know, we have a project. We need five thousand dollars this year and you could do that. So the, the, this, the direction of the road district is completely in the road district's hand, which was formed in two thousand nine. Um, I do take a little bit of exception about the idea that we don't do homework. Um, I have all the well logs that are posted by the state in that area. Uh, we know that. We, we know that when Ms. Lee bought the property, she had to have an inspection. Uh, she had an appraisal. Uh, all of that occurred. So there is a lot of due diligence done. The fact that she wants to divide this and our first attempt was, uh, to go to three lots based on the fact that this particular property, uh, future land use had two different types of, of land use on it. Uh, today we're back at the ranchette, which is dividing it into two, two parcels and it's thirteen acres. So that's the genesis. Um, we've also heard and stated that her emoti- motivations, which, uh, was to create two more vacation home rentals. That's never been expressed to me. It's always been expressed to sell a lot out for a single-family residence, uh, type thing. So that, uh, just to clear some of that. In terms of the water, Ron, you asked, I have every well log in that area that, that is state, you know, um, that being confined on the state records. I didn't submit it. I got ten of them. But they range from the Gunderson one to seven hundred and fifty, which was down in two thousand eight, uh, down to two hundred feet. Uh, the particular well we were unconcerned was, was that well on the property, which was drilled to four hundred and fifty feet uh, with, with a six inch casing versus the five inch casing on the Gunderson one. Um, the, that gives this particular property a six hundred and sixty gallon storage in that pipe. Um, and that was a concern for us, you know, just for the use of that property. So felt that it was, uh, an adequate well. Going forward with other wells, she's very much correct in terms that wells are in this area hit fractures. They're not a water system. They're not connected. Uh, you know, potentially fracture could be connected to another potentially. But when the wells were drilled and they go back all the way back to the late nineteen, you know, nineteen ninety-seven and, and forward to two thousand eight, you got some of them at that time were one gallon a minute. Some were two and a half gallons a minute, some were a hundred gallons a minute, some were twenty gallons a minute. So that complete area, uh, you know, has different volumes of wells. And, and a person buying this lot, if it's able to become another lot, um, you know, I don't, I don't want to say buyer beware, but you know, you, they go into it knowing they drill a well and there's no well driller that's gonna say what you're gonna get for water. But there are options and Ron alluded to one earlier and that was, you know, if you have a low-flowing well, then you typically would put in a cistern that the well would flow into. And then you put a ten gallon a minute pump on that fifteen hundred gallon cistern and be very adequate. Plus gives additional storage for that house. So that's, that's all to be determined. Um, but, uh, we think this is a reasonable request. Um, you know, there's quite a few other things I could comment, but I'm gonna reserve that and just, I think this has been hashed out pretty hard.
Mr. Chair.
Jim. Mr. Roskine.
So there is a, I think it's called South Dakota Rural Water and they're out of Spearfish and it's a free service. And if someone said, could you go come down and check my well out? Then what they would do is they would see what the depth of your well is, verify that. Then they would see where the static level is. So if you got a two hundred foot well and your static level is at a hundred feet, that means one hundred foot of that well's got water in there. Then what they do is they do a drawdown. And that drawdown is they'll sit there and run that for five, ten minutes. Then they'll check that static level again. And if that static level dropped thirty feet, that's telling you how fast that well's recharging. It's telling you how much static water, your static level. And then it's also measuring your cone of depression. So that is, uh, you know, I, I would, and if somebody needs the telephone number, uh, in Spearfish, have them come down and, and then they can tell you, they'll tell you what your well's doing, how healthy it is.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Um, I think the commission, we've heard a lot of testimony today. This comes to the commission with a recommendation from staff for approval of the rezone. Um, is there any further discuss, uh, discussion from the commission? Do you have any more comments or questions for anybody?
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna make a couple of comments. I, you know, I'm hearing it from before. I know we talked about, you know, we, I think, I think we all said that we'd be more comfortable with splitting it into two ranchettes because it still keeps it with the ag capability and things of that nature. Uh, the property owner is gonna have to be the one that deals with the, the water flow system, whether they put in a well or whether they put in a, um, a cistern that, that'll be determined whether or not they can get water or not. And we, and that's not a guarantee. So, uh, I think after all the testimony we've heard on this, I, I lean to support the turning it into a ranchette because that's what we talked about previously, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Laster, for the refresh. You're right, we did have this discussion. So is there somebody who wants to put a motion on the floor?
I will.
Ms. Hancock.
Based on staff recommendation, I move approval for the rezone.
Second.
Been moved by Hancock, seconded by Laster for approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash thirty-one. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks, for coming here today. That brings us to item number twenty-two, which is the twenty twenty-three, uh, legislative session. Uh, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Drews, followed by Mr. Lassiter.
I will, uh, I'll provide you some updates on the bills, even though we're about halfway through the legislative session. A lot of these bills have not received, uh, uh, action from either body at this point in time. A lot of action will start taking place here in the next, uh, two or three weeks. But, uh, Senate Bill twenty-one, one that, uh, uh, we're very interested in relative to the Black Hills National Forest Land. Yeah, Ron and I and Scott Guffey had the opportunity to test, testify in this bill, uh, before the, uh, Senate, um, Ag and Natural Resources, uh, where it was approved. And then that was referred to Joint Committee on Appropriations. All of these bills that have money tied to them, uh, will, will end up eventually in appropriations. And, uh, appropriations is probably not gonna take any individual action on most of these bills until later in the session. Uh, after they get all, all the bills with money appropriations, then they will do their hearings and sort those out. Uh, and many of those are probably gonna be, uh, killed in appropriations or appropriations will vote to, uh, not recommend, uh, those bills. And so it's a matter of trying to keep, um, uh, information so that you can see exactly what's, what's happening on those. This is one I think will receive some pretty good positive, um, looks as, as far as appropriations is concerned. But it is for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and so it's a considerable lot of money. Senate Bill thirty-one, which would create the off-road vehicle decal for non-residents visiting the state. Uh, this did pass the Senate. It sits now in the, uh, House Transportation. Uh, no hearing has been scheduled on that one at this point in time. Senate Bill forty-one to establish a program for housing infrastructure loans and grants. This is the one that was passed a year ago originally. Uh, it's been moved now to, uh, now the infrastructure, uh, housing. And, uh, that did receive approval from the Senate and is now sitting in, in House Transportation. Senate Bill, or, uh, I'm sorry, that one was actually, uh, assigned by the governor. That received approval of both bodies and was signed by the governor. So all of those applications that were made, uh, during the coast since July of last year, thinking that bill was in effect already. And then basically it kind of got pulled back and redone during this legislative session. Those applications will now be looked at as well as new ones to determine whether or not the applications have been filled out properly, et cetera. And, uh, and then they'll be judged based on, on their individual applications. Senate Bill fifty-five, uh, which was to prohibit rancher's voting and Commissioner Lassiter can speak on this, did receive, uh, Senate approval. It now is over at the House State Affairs. Senate Bill ninety-nine, uh, which we, uh, testified on on the House side, would authorize the counties to issue bonds for certain expenditures funded by grocery season's tax. Uh, this bill was killed in the, in the House Committee and now has been, uh, essentially killed in the, uh, Senate, uh, Committee. Or actually this full Senate acted on this one and killed it twenty-eight to seven. Senate Bill one twenty, uh, to increase the amount of property value owned by local industrial corporations that is exempt from taxation. Uh, there, the economic development corporations in the state are proposing to move this exemption from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to ten million. Uh, Commissioner Roskine and I, uh, at his request, met, uh, bravely with Garth Wadsworth, uh, during the last, um, Cracker Bell Session and, uh, explained that our concern, or I guess I explained my concern was that this is a big jump on the exemption numbers. Uh, we don't have any information to basically kind of justify that. So, uh, that's being reworked. It has, it was scheduled for a hearing this morning before Senate Commerce and Energy and I haven't gotten any word as to how that went at this point in time. Then we go to Senate Bill one fifty, uh, which is, uh, one that we did testify on also. This adds to provisions regarding the construction and maintenance of livestock pipelines and highways. And it became, uh, a disagreement amongst, uh, a, a number of attorneys as to whether, uh, this already existed in statute or not. Uh, we did have Senator, former Senator, uh, Kamak and, uh, um, trying to think who else testified. Helene. Helene. And Justin. And, um, Randy Dibert, uh, testified on this bill, uh, from the legislature that were in favor of it. Justin Uryg, who's, who made the request to us last year, uh, he also testified, uh, via remote and, uh, did a good job on behalf of it. I, I would say that this bill's got probably a very high probability of getting through the, the House also. It, it did pass through the Senate. Senate Bill one fifty-five is a bill to create, uh, the Jail Improvement and Construction Fund for the improvement and construction of jails. This was introduced by Senator Breitling. And, uh, this would provide, uh, both a grant or a loan, uh, system. Uh, this was also, this was, uh, uh, moved to a joint appropriations in their committee meeting yesterday with a do-pass stamp on it. And so again, that's another one of those that'll sit in joint appropriations. And, uh, they'll wade through all those appropriations bills at a, at a later point in time. Uh, best advice on that is to figure out what local legislators, what, what legislators serve on appropriations. And trying to make contact on that with them on bills that, uh, we have an interest in, uh, moving forward. So Senate Bill one sixty-two, uh, is one that was, uh, introduced by Senator Dietrich, uh, involved public meeting requirements. Um, I'll let Holly, uh, chime in on this. It did come out of, uh, sent the local government on a do-pass. Uh, the indication is that it's not designed really for counties. It's designed for, uh, maybe townships and others to make sure that they have opportunity for public comment. And, um, it, it would, it would basically, again, mandate the, the public comment section. Holly, anything further on that that you want to add to it? I know that Holly had some, some contact with Senator Dibert, uh, in regard to that of suggesting some friendly amendments to it.
Yeah, I listened to the testimony that morning and there were two individuals that expressed the same concerns that I had um, in regards to setting the time based on topic and how that might be administered. Um, in speaking with Jay Alderman, he feels that the way we handle it now, we are, would be in compliance if that statute passed. Um, but basically it would require a public comment section beyond every single agenda that we produce, not just regularly scheduled going forward. So, um, it, it had unanimous support.
Okay. Thank you. There, there is a troubling bill, Senate Bill one seventy-four, which would prohibit counties or municipalities from enacting or implementing an ordinance, resolution or policy that prohibits the connection or reconnection of an energy utility service. The troubling part of this is, is we're, I think we're on, on the same side as the, as the utility companies providing these services of not wanting what's happening in, in some parts of the country of saying, uh, gas is bad and we don't want you using it in your home for, uh, appliances anymore. Uh, but what this bill does is it would stop us, counties and municipalities, from creating an ordinance, which would, the ordinance would simply say, you know, we don't want you banning, trying to ban gas in South Dakota. But the utilities don't want us to have the, they want to take away any authority that we may have in creating an ordinance on it. So those things are still gonna have to be worked out in discussions and, and, and the county association is working on that. It, it now sets, that bill sets in, uh, Senate local government. And it's not, probably not gonna move out of there until somebody comes forward and says, okay, we, we've come to an agreement as to what the wording needs to be or that that wording shouldn't, that shouldn't exist.
That one's scheduled for tomorrow.
Except tomorrow. Okay. Didn't realize that. House Bill ten twenty-nine is the one that, uh, was introduced by the governor. It's a county zoning and appeals process. Essentially what it would do for us is on the, uh, when we set as a board of adjustment, instead of being a super majority vote on that, it would change it to a majority vote. Uh, this bill really isn't designed for us. It's designed for livestock operations more than it is for anything else, which could have, I mean, livestock operations could affect us too, but, uh, but that's what it's designed for. Because especially in the smaller counties, they have so many, um, either conflicts of interest because of small county, the commissioners, the commissioner may be one of those that actually applying for it or his neighbor or his cousin or whatever. And so they end up with maybe a commissioner or two that need to, uh, abstain themselves from it. All of a sudden, they don't have, they don't have enough votes. So this would change it to not only the super majority, but change it to, uh, majority of those in attendance at the meeting. Got a few more here. Another one we testified on was, uh, House Bill ten forty-two to update the additional charges allowed for mailing decals. This was, uh, Janet Salers', uh, bill initially. She and Holly are the ones that put this together. They did come up with, uh, an amendment to that, uh, one that was agreed upon by both the state and the, uh, in Fenton County for sure. I think maybe the other county is on, on board with that. And so that does allow for, uh, a change in that, uh, for those fees of mailing those out. Passed the House sixty-eight to two and is now sets in Senate Transportation. And I haven't heard that there's any, uh, schedule on that at this point in time. Uh, House Bill ten fifty, which I testified on, was the one in the House side on the grocery. receipts tax for infrastructure, which was killed, uh, seven to six in that committee. So we lost it by one vote. And then a bill that didn't testify on, but, uh, worked quite a bit on, uh, would require the counties to hire veteran service officers in proportion to the number of veterans residing in the county. This bill was deferred to the 41st day was the century kills that, that bill. Uh, House Bill 1064 now requires the unified judicial system to assemble a task force to address the provisions of legal services to indignant parties within the South Dakota court system. This has been a major discussion during the legislative session and, uh, is a, a good bill on the surface to get a, basically a study going on that, uh, how that bill passed the House 67 to two and now sits in the, uh, Senate Judiciary, which Senator Duhamel is the chair of. 1072 is the lithium bill, which would add lithium to the severance tax if it's lithium is, uh, mined in the future. Um, that passed the, uh, House on a vote of 57 to 13. And I think the last one that I, no, not quite. Uh, House Bill 1075 is the governor's bill for the no sales tax on food. Again, sets in appropriations at this point in time. Uh, and I'm not, I, I think the main talk that I picked up and hear on that is that, uh, the concern is not so much taking the, the sales tax on food this year, but what happens in a year or two years down the road, uh, will we have to, uh, again, start looking for that lost revenue, either in the form of that kind of sales tax again, or some other tax. House Bill 1149, uh, revises the classification of owner occupied single family dwellings to include more than one attached or unattached garage. Uh, Ron could speak probably better than us, but what we discovered is that, uh, by following state law, um, our equalization, maybe others throughout the state determine that if you have a detached, uh, garage or building, that that's, that doesn't fit under the owner occupied qualification. So this is a bill to try to clarify that. And then my last one is House Bill 1151. And this is the bill to create the South Dakota Paid Family Leave Program. And this is the one I mentioned, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, suggested to our HR department that they may want to follow this one. Uh, this would create it for the state, but it would also allow, uh, other, uh, local government entities to be a part of it if they chose to be, uh, would provide some additional benefits, uh, plus it would move some other things over as an insurance program, uh, for local governments if they so choose. So a lot of ramifications to it. I think it's, um, a pretty popular bill as farmers legislators and, and looking at it have felt that it's, it's a good bill and, uh, it, it sets in the House State Affairs as far as I know as of this time yet.
Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you, Gary. Mr. Raskin.
Uh, Commissioner Drews, can you, did we, uh, mention House Bill 74?
I did not.
I just wondered where that one sat. Regionalization of jails.
What was the number again, sir?
Uh, House, uh, Senate Bill 74.
Senate Bill 74, yeah.
It's actually, uh, sets in, um, in the Senate. Uh, Senate Judiciary did, uh, pass it on a vote of six to one. Um, but the, the Senate floor, uh, on January 31st deferred it and, uh, have not taken any action on it.
Okay.
As of this time.
It was heard yesterday.
Holly, there's another bill out there. I think it's a House bill that, and it was something to do with decals on off-road vehicles, but it didn't really seem to pertain to these trails and the, like, off-road vehicles traveling on state highways. And I don't know what, uh, it was a House bill, I thought.
No, I think that's a, that's a Senate bill and it is.
That's Senate Bill 31.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not, okay, that's, so what's the scope of that bill? I'm just trying to figure it out.
Well, it doesn't provide anything for counties.
Okay.
No.
And it, it didn't sound like there was any kind of warrants to adding something like that in the legislators that I visited with.
Well, when I originally thought, saw it, I thought it might address some of the, uh, wear and tear that we get on our county roads, these, uh, side by side and stuff, using county roads to get to the Forest Service Trails.
Okay, Mr. Lassiter.
Well, I've been paying attention to a lot of the voting ones, if y'all can imagine. There's about, I don't know, 30 some odd voting ones between both sides of them. The, the ranked choice, ranked choice voting, which was Senate Bill 55 that, um, Commissioner Drews was talking about, it did pass, uh, and it went over to House State Affairs. And, um, waiting for a hearing on that one unless it's come up already, but I haven't heard about it. But really it's just to prohibit ranked choice voting. So if you had five candidates and you're trying to get down to two, if your last, uh, three candidates, you kind of start removing votes and adding them to the other ones. It's kind of a weird process, but it, um, there are states that use it. We don't use it so that that bill is a, it was a bill to prohibit us from using it in the state. We don't use it anyway, so. Uh, 82 was the Poll Watchers Bill, which was, uh, set to the 41st day. Uh, the two that are kind of the big ones that I haven't been really paying attention to is 139 and 140, because those are the ones that, um, Senator Dibert and I have been working on specifically is 139 for the residency requirement. It's had a couple of, uh, modifications to it after lots of conversations. Hasn't even had a hearing yet. It's going to be heard tomorrow. I'll be leaving tonight to go out there to testify on that one. And, uh, basically it's, there's been a lot of discussion about consecutive days, how many days do we want it? How do we want it to be worded? Do we want it to be worded, uh, like it is for the municipal and the, um, school board elections and the same, um, disciplinary action? There's been a lot of discussion with, let's just put it that way. It's finally going on there to be heard. I know there's still some concerns with it in its current format. Um, we'll, we'll be seeing if we can have some more of those conversations. In fact, I talked to, um, Cindy and, um, through Cindy, Barb from, Barbara from Lawrence County, I believe it's Barbara from Lawrence County, uh, some of the concerns and things on that one. So we'll see how that one goes. There was a talk about trying to merge it with Senate Bill 140, but after conversations with Senator Dibert, um, the determination was not to merge them because they were two technically separate bills, even though it sounded good to put it together. One was a, a requirements and one was a process. So we decided to keep them separate, but 140 ended up passing, uh, out of the Senate and it's going over to the House as well. So those are probably the big ones unless you have any, some, any major questions about any of them that are out there right now.
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Lassiter and Mr. Drews. Does anybody else have anything on those?
Ms. Haggard.
So Bill 150, um, I contacted Justin to see if they sent anything. So we ended up, I got the information from Megan and Tracy. They did the work on it with Joe and we sent it to Helene. So thank you for testifying with that, Gary, um, with Justin. Um, Joe said he would put his name on it if we needed to, uh, moving forward with Justin. And, um, I told him they could use my name and I don't know if the commission, because this is huge for the ag community. So when we had talked to Justin and remember when we came up, we said we would move this forward. So in order to do that, I sent it to Helene and then we moved forward from there, but, um, I appreciate it and it did go through six to zero, it sounds like, then it's going to the House. So, um, I'd like to thank, basically Justin is the one that kept this moving forward and then, uh, Tracy and, uh, Megan actually pushed this because, uh, Joe was wanting to help the ag community as well. And I think we're going to get another one of these coming up, um, moving forward. So I think they did some real due diligence by what they had put on there for some of the surety and stuff for Pennington County or the other counties if it goes through. But it sounds like, and that's what, um, Gary had said and Justin had said, that there was some, we already do this. I guess we don't understand it from some of the lawyers. Why don't we do it? Well, it's not interpreted by every county's lawyer that way. So, um, it was, did its due diligence and thanks Gary for, uh, testifying on that.
Thanks, Deb. Ron, did you have anything?
Relative to the bill, we just.
Just a report. You've been, you've been down there and testified too, so I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
Relative to the bills, uh, no, Gary and I were, uh, in support of Senate Bill 21, which is the Forest Service one, but other than that, I've just been watching.
Okay. I, I do want to take a moment and thank you guys all. I mean, I think this is probably one of the biggest turnout that we've had for a commission that actually go down and testify and done a lot of work that I've seen so far. So I really appreciate all of you guys' work and outreach and, and I think that speaks volume for Pennington County to have you guys all down there, including Holly and, and now it, this, this group here, but also you've got Janet and Donner's office for the work they do. And, um, I think it's very well recognized and I, I appreciate it.
You know, Lloyd, there was one bill, Holly might know it. So I sent detailed information to Tony Randolph, Kurt Shafie, uh,
Senate Bill, or House Bill 150.
Yeah, and then Jess Olson and trying to figure, and then Phil Jensen. And I thought, you know, these are the ones that, you know, this was relative. I, I think it was, uh, to support the infrastructure jails and whatnot. And I really thought I nailed that one and come to find out, uh, Jess Olson is the only one that voted A's.
I'm, I'm sorry, it wasn't 150. I misspoke on that. It was, uh,
But I, I think we're gonna, you know, down the road, we're gonna have some, we're gonna need some help from the state on some of our infrastructure.
Yeah. 150.
Okay. Okay. Well, thanks, guys. Next, we're going to move on to item number 23, is items from chair or commission members. And I'll read that again one more time for YouTube people. It's a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to fulfill to full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. My only thing that I would like to add as a comment for this is, is if, uh, staff could please get us the information on the vacation home ordinance, because I'm already getting phone calls on that and at least to the commissioners so we have it, because we're starting to get phone calls. They have a special meeting set for February 15th, if I'm correct, to go through it, but I've already received a phone call last night on it. So in order for me to be able to pass on what's going on, I need something in front of me to be able to, to inform them. So if we could get a rough draft of what's, some of the stuff is, uh, to the commissioners, I appreciate it. I know it's coming on the 15th and not final, but we, yeah. I got, I, I told the individual that I talked to that, you know, the deadline to get information into them is at least minimum 24 hours before the hearing. So that's the type of stuff. That's the only thing I had. Does anybody else have anything?
Uh, committee reports?
Nope. We're on the items from chair. If you have anything for me.
Okay.
I just read what.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, and Holly, you can clarify, do we need to talk about the, um, March public meeting on the PFAS issue or is that something that we've supported in the past that we have no problem, or is that something we're going to talk about and put on the agenda to prove it for the, for us to be able to do all the advertising for that and whatnot like we did last year, joint with the EPA, SADIDA and the base?
I'd have to look at exactly how the motion was made last year, but I, I believe it's a continuing that you would just maybe want to update the board.
Okay.
But I think we're good for continuation.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to take action on that one. But there is a planned, uh, public meeting again with the base, uh, EPA in March. And if, and unless we have an issue with hosting it again like we did last time, uh, it would be, we've already started working for it to be here and scheduled this room for it. Um, but I will point out, uh, with that, um, I don't know if y'all are familiar, we did have that public announcement, um, with SADIDA, City of Rapid City and, uh, Box Elder. And they all gave us, uh, at least, you know, from SADIDA's side of it, from, they, uh, said thank you with a big thank you to Pennington County for pushing forward to make sure that water system, um, is moving forward to take care of those that are contaminated out east of the base.
Thanks, Travis. I think, uh, that was a perfect spot for, for, uh, informing us to let us know what, you know, you plan on having a meeting and so forth. I think the discussion that we had, if I remember right, Deb, was just to want the city or county logo for advertising and so forth, if I remember correctly. I mean, you're doing the work. Okay. But that will go to committee reports and we'll start with Deb.
Start with me?
Yep.
So, um, we have the Drainage Commission. Um, on the Drainage Commission, we are going to, um, let everybody kind of assess where they want to move forward and decide if we want to move forward with the Drainage Commission or we want to do something different. I did talk to, um, Lance Lehman and he said that he thought it was a good idea to move forward, maybe not as, more of as an informational committee, so everybody knows what's going on with each, um, jurisdiction. Didn't sound like when he talked to Box Elder, they, they were really interested, but maybe if it was more for informational, um, we could still do what we may need to do through planning for some of our drainage and stuff for our, um, county. But it would be nice to know like how the city did their drainage fees or some things that were happening in, uh, Rapid City that were affecting us, that we are having issues with, with Box Elder or Rapid City. So we're all on the same page and maybe we could find some better solution by having a committee that actually is talking about how we can make that, you know, uh, a better future solution for all of us, because we keep going back and forth in different areas and it, it doesn't seem to be working, especially in that three mile limit. Uh, so anything we could do to move forward with that, um, starting to talk with Lance and some of the other people as well to see if we can at least use it for informational. Planning Commission went well. We had a thing, just like I asked them, uh, notification of information, how far ahead they need to be notified instead of people handing their information at the dais, what they thought. So they're going to have more discussion on that. Compensation Committee, we are, we're working you here today on the wage study for the future. We also worked on safe harbor policy for exempt employees, compensation administration, demotions versus transfers. Um, we continued, uh, administration and promotions, um, because we needed Carol to be there, so we're still having more conversations on that. Fire Service Board, we did have a meeting. It's not on my, um, agenda here, but we had a meeting on budget already to move forward. Um, that was also a discussion on VEL and some of the stuff you heard today on the future of, um, volunteering in, uh, first responders. So that was a good meeting. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Pennington County Housing Authority. I'll let Ron tell you more about that. So.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Ron?
Uh, the Building Committee. So the facility, uh, needs assessment. BKV has sent a draft copy to Kevin and Mike to review. And then we discussed possible locations and solutions for buildings and grounds and the public defender. And, and that's why I thought, you know, I don't know about buildings and ground, they're going to need some acreage, but the public defender, I thought if we could, uh, get that, uh, Great Western Bank property, that would be probably a good, uh, maybe a solution for the public defender. I'm not exactly sure how much room they're going to need, but that's one of the, uh, locations that we're struggling with relative to buildings and ground. The building that we bought at 900 Concourse, we're in the process of advertising and reviewing possible arch, architectural firms for design and repurpose of the facility. And the interviews for that's supposed to take place March 3rd, 2023, and I think that's the same day that there's a, uh, a, a meeting up in Timberlake with the county officials. So I originally, and I think Janet did too, uh, agreed that we would, uh, take part of that interview, but just have to figure out what's, which way we want to go, either do the interview or go up to Timberlake. There was that adjacent lot to the north of the 900 Concourse building. And we were supposed to close on that, uh, 31st of January and for $266,413 or $220 a square foot. And that bill that Gary was talking about, that Garth approached just And that bill that Gary was talking about, that Garth approached, just wanted to go from seven fifty to the ten million. Well, I asked Garth to give me an inventory of the properties that were involved with that ten million. And he sent me the old ascent building that would be the incubator at the School of Mines that was sold to the School of Mines last year for five hundred thousand. And then the building where the, uh, David West Accelerator building is. And then Turman Drive, you know, Turman Drive is the property that we just bought. Ironically enough, or a part of it, it's a, it's a large acreage. And what they did is they chiseled off a couple acres and that's the stuff that we bought. So I'm really trying to get an idea of what, uh, where Garth is going with, with this ten million. And then there's some property on Creek Drive that he, he, uh, could give me the, he's still supposed to be getting me the information on that. Uh, Pivot Point Ribbon Cutting, uh, you guys did that, I think, on the fifth of January. Six new cubicles complete for the State's Attorney's Office. Public Safety Building, the scope's been greatly reduced, uh, down to forty thousand. And that's because Public Safety will eventually move over here. So they're not going to spend as much money as they originally were, you know, with the bulletproof glass and walls and all that. Courthouse Tunnel, they figure that's going to be one point three million dollar cost. And Liz Hazit is submitting a grant for one half of that cost. Brian is working on a master plan for the jail. And the county might have an opportunity to purchase five point six acres on Creek Drive for the new jail site. This would be adjacent to. Sending, okay, sending the get numbers for, uh, one hundred million dollar thirty-year bond. There's currently forty-three point two million available. Brian indicated that he needed additional funds rent to, uh, or he's going to be relocating about a hundred inmates, looking for help from the state and Marshall's Office. Penning County Housing Redevelopment, award contract for elevator modern, modernization for Memorial Park Apartments. Otis Elevator Company of Rapid City was chosen, estimated cost between eighty and ninety thousand. And once they start the work, should have, be about three weeks of downtime. We, uh, approved utility allowances pursuant to HUD Public Housing and Section Eight Housing Choice Vulture Program. We did an, uh, annual evaluation for Brian Onbok. He's our executive director and we gave him a six percent raise. Approved the MEP, and that's Mechanical Lithgow Plumbing for three of our older properties, uh, that, uh, have intensive HVAC systems. That'd be Jackson Heights Apartments, Valley View High Rise and River Ridge Apartments. And these things have boilers and pneumatic controls and they're old and probably not that efficient. So the study that we're gonna have done, they're gonna go in there and say, can you still get parts for this stuff? Uh, you know, if you go to this, this is what it's going to cost, but it's going to be much more efficient. And so in the long run, you know, we're just trying to figure out, uh, maybe to be, uh, more proactive than reactive. Because when that, when some of this stuff goes down, it's going to get pretty expensive. Black Hills Council Local Governments, we elected officers. Kevin Forster's the chair, City's, City's Sturgis.
Right.
And I'll be the vice chair. Richie Norrisum's the secretary. Larry Larson's the treasurer. We reviewed Jennifer's two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty-two performance report newsletter that she presented in front of the commission a couple of meetings ago. It's a really good report and very detailed. And it showed the benefits that belong to the Black Hills Council Local Governments. Upcoming applications, uh, the deadlines were presented and the current list of projects and status, they're either being approved, pending or denied. And, uh, there's a, just kind of gave us an update of where certain projects were at. And then the update from the members, I, the two, all the communities, uh, county, city, vacation rentals was the number one, uh, item that was talked about. And then second was a shortage of affordable housing for workforce. Uh, just other items, fire services. I did meet with Jerome and discuss his recruitment, recruitment program and how West six oh five episodes play into that. Obviously, there's a severe shortage of volunteer firefighters that are present and that's a major concern. And I suggested that he do the program that he did today, which I thought was, uh, uh, K E Van, was it? Did a really good job putting that together. Uh, I met with Shannon Champion. She's the egg lady at the DOE and we discussed, so she's reaching out to those who are qualified, uh, classified as egg and have them reapply for the egg status to make sure that they're, they qualify for under South Dakota Code, codified law ten dash six dash one one two. As there are many out there classified as egg status are questionable. So she's got a list of about sixteen million and they're just borderline. Do they really qualify? Don't they qualify? So, um, these are going to be, the next phase is going to be in my district, probably a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty letters are going to go out. And she's going to say, if you want to stay under the egg status, you're gonna, what's going to be different than previous years is that they're going to have to actually provide income documentation and more documentation. And so the, uh, script documentation that will be required will be a Schedule F for farming, Schedule E for lease contracts, and then a Schedule T for timber. And she, uh, she doesn't expect to get, get them all, but I think there's going to be, she's already sent out letters and they say, look, you know, we don't qualify. This is just the beginning of the program, but she said you're going to probably be getting some, uh, emails and phone calls once, uh, you know, this gets further into the process. Black Hills Stock Show, it took place, uh, in the Stock Show Celebrity Showmanship event with, uh, other celebrities such as the Personnel Rapid City Police Department, Pennington County Sheriff's Department, Mike Tiles, Vice President of Operations of Monument Health is there. Uh, Commander Chief for the twenty-eighth Bomb Wing, Ellsworth Air Force is there. Don Hedrick, Chief of Police Rapid City. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. Murdock Johns, Home Slice Media. Ben Rogers, publisher for the Rapid City Journal. Representatives from Dakota Gold, uh, Phil Aldridge, K O T, evening, evening anchor, and representatives from the Monument. Uh, my animal this year, I, I went big. I grabbed the camel. Because I just, I just got out of my boot. And these little animals, they were dragging those guys all over the place. That camel was big, but it, uh, it was very manageable. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Ron. And I, I will say, I think we're, with the Building Committee, we should be getting reports the minutes after the meeting. Also, if I remember right, that's one of the things we discussed, I just wanted to pass that on. Um, thanks, Ron. You did Black Hills Local Governments, I don't have to read on that. Drainage Commission, thanks Deb. Community Health, I will bring up, uh, we are discussing, uh, budgets and where the money was going and so forth and, and, um, how the money was coming in as far as Medicare, Medicaid and all that stuff. But one of the things I brought up is I said, what are you doing with the money that the county is giving to you? And so, because we had some new members there. We give, I believe it's around a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand to Community Health every year.
Correct.
And that money goes towards paying for medications. And so Tim actually gave us, he says, Lloyd, I gotta tell you this story. That where this money goes to helping with medications. And he brought up a, a client that, who had been struggling with mental health and staying on their meds and so forth. But they found a medication that was like a one time, you know, one, once a month shot for, for the disorder this person had. And through the money that we are able to supply with their insurances and so forth, they were able to get this person the shot. And he says it dramatically changed this person's life. Because instead of trying to stay on meds every day and fumbling up the one shot every twenty-one days was working for him. And they actually started, got into One Heart and actually was, got a job down at, uh, Fork Rail and was working at Fork Rail. And so he just wanted to pass that on to us to share with you guys that, that money goes for that type of stuff. And so it's the medications. And so I told him I had passed that on. The other thing that we did is we did the kickoff of the Stock Show for, uh, on Friday and, and it was exciting. Everybody was there. Um, we got to see the birth of a goat, me and Mayor Elder. Got to watch that. That was a little bit, um, different. Um, you know, Deb, you weren't there. I actually said something nice about you.
He did. He said something nice.
I had, I was just telling Holly, I wasn't, I wasn't there. I had to do hair on Friday, so.
But, uh, I did something a little bit different. I kind of gave a little background of each person. I tried to, you get nervous and you forget, I forget Ron's. But I tried to give a little bit of, a little bit of background about the commissioners and who they are when you introduce them. So I tried to do that a little bit different and it went well. I think, uh, Travis got someone approached him afterwards and some stuff, so. But that was a pretty exciting, uh, day. Everything looked good. So Larry Roden was there and, and Gary read the proclamation and did a very fine job. So that's all I have to report.
Gary, um, I did the, uh, one of my new assignments this year is the library. And so I did the, uh, orientation and, uh, I'll be at my first meeting there, uh, next week. And then, uh, the one board that did meet was Elevate and I missed it. Um, I planned on going, but then I ended up in Pier. And so, and quite frankly, once I found out that I needed to go to Pier, I kind of forgot about all the things. And so after I got to Pier, I sent a message saying I won't be there. And, and Tom said, that's okay. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thanks, Gary.
And Mr. Chair, I just, uh, I went to the Chau Hall Luncheon. This time it was the Honorary Commander, um, Luncheon. So they kind of went through the outgoing honorary commanders and, and bringing on the new honorary commanders. And I know he's not here today, but Sheriff Mueller was there. He's, he was assigned to the, uh, twenty-fifth Bomb Wing, uh, Command Chief. So he's going to get, he's a, an honorary commander with the, um, Command Chief there. I thought it was kind of neat sitting at the same table with those individuals. Because as you know, I'm retired out of Ellsworth, so it was a good conversation. I enjoyed the, the rodeo as well. Was able to make it out there a few times, other than the, the ribbon cutting with those of us who made it to that. Um, and then just to kind of give you guys heads up on, y'all, y'all saw some emails about the Fire Department in New Underwood. Uh, Jerome and I are working through that. We're also made aware of recent, we've been working through that for like a year. And we also were just recently made aware of something out in Wall with the ambulance. So we're going to be going out there and having a meeting with those individuals and, and moving forward with some stuff there. So just to kind of give you guys heads up, if you do hear anything about it, by all means, don't hesitate to, uh, tap me and Jerome for either one of those particular incidences because we're working through those and with the individuals that are involved there, so.
Good.
Travis, I, um, also contacted the lady and told her that you were dealing with the New Underwood and stuff and that I wasn't, um, going to be in the, well, you were going to contact all of us and tell us what was happening instead of us contacting her individually, unless people want to. But Travis has been dealing with that area for about a year, guys. That's why, um, I kind of stayed out of that one.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I think Travis sent out an email saying that type of stuff. And I appreciate that because otherwise we get these string of emails and I try to stay out of them.
And I understand there's frustration out there, um, but there is a process that has to take place. And the next one is this next vote for the Fire District. And some of their complaints might be addressed once they go through this next election and put, um, their board back together again. So, um, it's, you know, we, we advise them on some things they should have done earlier. They haven't done it, but we're, we're working through them to make sure they do it, um, appropriately and, and the right way and get the right things going and so.
Okay. It looks like we have two more items for executive session. So I'd look for a motion to go into executive session for Personnel, S D C L.
Vouchers first.
Who have the vouchers?
Two million, four hundred and forty-seven, two hundred and three thousand, sixty-one cents. Moved by Haggard, second by Lassiter. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now I'd look for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Personnel, S D C L, one twenty-five, two dash one. Moved by Gary, second by Luster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to the mode of executive session.
It's been moved to the mode of executive session, seconded by Ross Connect. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn. Are we done?
Moved by Haggard to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Drews. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.